Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. Do you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. This is where our Board of Education usually holds our board meetings, so we really didn't expect this many people tonight. So, we are still looking for chairs and hope that we can make you all comfortable. Roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Ms. Antellus.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted August 11, 2012, one at all schools, two at the Home News Tribune, three Asbury Park Press, and four filed with the Clerk of the Municipality. At this time, I'd like to welcome back our student board members. Mr. Anari Patel, who is not with us this evening, he is our senior representative from the school to our Board of Education, and I'd like to welcome Ms. Francesca Sparanza, who is our junior representative of the Board of Education. So, we'd like to welcome you to our board and hope that this is an exciting and productive year for you. Do you have anything that you would like to report on the schools, this meeting?
Yeah, as for upcoming events?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Francesca Sparanza, the new junior class Board of Education representative for this year. Some important events that have occurred and are upcoming in September are September 5th was the first day of school. The school will be closed on September 17th and 18th due to rush ashana. There's a senior parent meeting in the lecture hall on September 20th at 6:30 PM. September 24th is back-to-school night for the high school. September 25th is a four-hour session for all schools. And September 26th, schools are closed due to yom kippur. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, and welcome to the board again.
Thank you.
At this time, we are going to number four on our agenda, the Jamesburg tuition update. Mr. Gorski will give an update on where we stand with the Jamesburg district.
I would like to start by outlining the history, followed by a current status update, and finally, future considerations of the sending-receiving relationship between the Jamesburg Board of Education and the Monroe Board of Education. Until 1976, when Monroe built its own high school, Monroe High School pupils actually attended Jamesburg High School on a sending-receiving relationship. In 1976, when Monroe pulled its students and related tuition monies from the Jamesburg Board of Ed, Jamesburg incurred financial difficulties affecting their abilities to support academic programs and comprehensive curriculum. On April 4th, 1979, the State Board of Education determined that Jamesburg High School be closed, and that from June 30, 1979 forward, resident students from grades nine through 12 are designated tuition pupils for an indeterminate period effective July 1st, 1979, at the Monroe Township High School. Monroe appealed to the State Board, and on May 2nd, 1979, the State Board affirmed the closing of Jamesburg's High School and the sending of their students in grades nine to 12 to the Monroe Board of Education. On June 4th, 1979, on an appeal to the final determinations of the State Board on 4/4/79 and 5/2/79, the State Supreme Court heard Monroe's appeal and determined that the 5/2/79 State Board's determination was affirmed at the State Supreme Court level. Since 1979, Jamesburg's high school students have been a welcomed and undifferentiated addition to Monroe's student body. Jamesburg has paid tuition to Monroe, including an interest component, sharing bond interest costs since 1979. These bonds over the years have included the original 1979 building and construction of the high school, 1989 auxiliary gym construction, 1994 construction of the Richard P. Morasko Center, the 1997 academic wings for science and math. In 2003, after a revision reducing $24 million of project costs to an earlier referendum to build a new high school on Applegarth Road, Monroe was successful in passing a new Monroe Township High School referendum, including $67,699,000 in bond issuance and a $15.2 million grant from the state. In 2008, a second referendum was passed for increased costs due to delays in construction from a legal challenge led by a group called Park Savers. $41,900,000 in bonds were issued additionally. Payments on debt for these two referenda began August 1st, '04, and September 1st, '08. On December of 2007, and again in January of 2009, Monroe's administration and board met with Jamesburg's counterparts to outline interest costs which will be shared between the districts as part of the tuition cost. Jamesburg requested at these meetings that because Jamesburg was paying for their proportionate share of interest on the original Monroe Township High School, that they should not have to pay their proportionate share of interest on the new Monroe Township High School while it was under construction. Monroe agreed and began charging interest to Jamesburg on the new Monroe Township High School when their students began enrollment in September of 2011. This is documented in Monroe's minutes. Now, I'll give an update. In 2012, Monroe aggressively refinanced their 2003-series bonds, saving interest cost over the life of these bonds. Jamesburg's share will be decreased, however, their enrollment percentage of the high school enrollment is increasing, which will likely offset the benefit of this refunding to Jamesburg. The budget law of 2010 created a hard 2% tax levy cap. This law eliminated many cap waivers such as costs associated with building a new school that Monroe faced, and also a tuition cap waiver which used to be part of the law. This would have allowed Jamesburg to budget for tuition amounts exceeding the cap, putting tuition outside of that calculation. That was eliminated. The law without consideration for pre-existing agreements like between Monroe and Jamesburg created a hardship for Jamesburg in their ability to properly budget for tuition and related interest costs. However, the districts were able to do so with the assistance of the county office of the Department of Education. It's important to note that as of this date, Jamesburg has always paid their full state-certified actual tuition costs to Monroe in accordance with law. They are current; they have never been in arrears. Finally, I'll go over some future considerations. The previously agreed-to tuition in year 1314 will contain approximately $600,000 of high school bond interest, which will be charged by Monroe and collected from Jamesburg. This is not a one-time charge, but an annual sharing of Monroe's interest costs for this facility. Mechanically, it will be very difficult for Jamesburg to budget for and raise these additional funds under the current budget law. I've now concluded with my report, and I would like to offer the Board of Education an opportunity to introduce any action at this time to deviate from the current agreement sharing bond interest cost on the new Monroe Township High School with Jamesburg based upon the percentage of average daily enrollment.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. So, the only question that the board has tonight, well, is where we stand with the percentage of the yearly payments from Jamesburg for their interest portion of the new high school. The Monroe Board has already taken action on and approved an agreement between the Monroe and Jamesburg Board of Educations where they would continue, or they would pay Monroe $600,000 in their interest course for the new high school yearly for the life of the bonds. So, the question is, does this board wish to go in another direction, or do we want to continue to honor the agreement we entered into last year? Patrice?
I'd first like to say, on behalf of the Jamesburg Board of Education, I'd like to acknowledge Darren Larson, our past president, who died suddenly of a heart attack August 22nd at the age of 46. Contrary to comments made by community members at the Monroe Board meeting, it would have been totally inappropriate to discuss any topic related to the Jamesburg-Monroe tuition issue that night, as he had literally passed a few hours earlier. I thank the board for their sensitivity. He left behind his wife, Corinne, who was employed by Monroe Township as a bus driver, and five children. In Darren's short life, he gave of himself his time unconditionally. His focus was his children, all the children, and their well-being and their education. He was motivated and fair-minded, and was a sounding board and a voice of reason when many had become completely unreasonable in this tuition issue. I thank him for his time and compassion; we will miss him. Over the 17 years I have served as the Jamesburg rep to Monroe, the rumors have run rampant. I have tried to stay focused on the main goal, to give Jamesburg children an opportunity for an excellent education here in Monroe. We've never owed millions; we have never been asked to leave because of late payment or non-payment. We have been timely and cooperative in all financial dealings. We have also contributed greatly in the area of student achievement, such as past valedictorian, exceptional athletes, musicians, scholars, and just well-rounded students. I want to thank the Monroe Board members and administration that have been here since I started to navigate through and steer clear of all the negativity. I want to explain in the simplest of terms that it is clear to everyone, and no one walks away here tonight once again confused or still scratching their heads. We have paid tuition to Monroe since 1979. We also pay specific transportation costs, separate from tuition, which the tuition already has transportation built into it. We have paid interest on the debt service to Monroe for 32 years on the property that is now the Monroe Township Middle School, and we have no claims to it. By law, Monroe may or may not charge the interest on this debt service. We are basically tenants to Monroe; we pay a rate which increases every year for our children to attend the high school. We don't owe the building; we have no one's say in what becomes of the building, but we have helped pay the debt down on the building. When you rent an apartment or a storefront, you pay rent, which has building upkeep and other factors built into it. You don't pay a fee on top of that because you don't own any part of that facility. We have helped pay down the high school for 32 years, and it is now the taxpayer of Monroe, Monroe Middle School. Monroe now has a new high school, and we pay a tuition, and we pay transportation. We are also asking to pay again, once again, on the interest on the debt service, which Monroe by law may or may not charge. We don't have it. The state, in its inequities for logical, fair funding, has always shorted Jamesburg in its ability to provide for special education, general education, and its tuition to Monroe. We, the board, I myself, have contacted Assemblypeople, Commissioners of Education, Senators, Governors, such as Linda Greenstein, Rush Holt, Chris Christie, to no avail. While I understand Monroe must do what's best for their taxpayers, when does it stop becoming, excuse me, when does it stop being about the dollar and become about fairness and what's morally right, and most importantly, the children of Jamesburg?
Thank you, Patrice. Is there anyone else from the Board of Education wishing to speak? Mr. Leary?
I support Mr. Gorski's proposal that we continue.
I propose that we support Mr. Gorski's analysis and recommendation, that we go forward with this and try and maintain some kind of a harmonious relationship, but there is a longstanding precedent for payment for infrastructure and construction, and also for the use of facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a motion?
No. We've already had action on this, so if we wanted to go in another direction, we would need to make a motion. So, unless somebody makes a motion, we're going to continue with honoring the agreement that we entered into last year.
Just want to make one point.
Mr. Klein?
As far as inequity in funding in Jamesburg, we also have inequity in funding. Basically, most of you have read in the newspaper or saw it on Channel 28, we're getting roughly $500 per student. I, myself, have contacted and had letters to the State Supreme Court, the Jersey Department of Education, Chris Christie, I've spoken to him not only at town hall meetings, but one-on-one, to no avail. To be flat-out honest with you, I don't think the state gives a damn about us. And I'm very happy to see the turnout that we have here. Perhaps the taxpayer organizations will get together and start raising hell with Trenton. So, I want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Okay, we will be going, actually, I have something to, an item to add on before the public forum, that the agenda had already been written up before this came into effect, so I just want to take a few moments to go into something. This past Monday, September 10th, myself, Dr. Hamilton, and Mr. Gorski met with Council President Jerry Tambora, Business Administrator Wayne Hamilton, Municipal Employee George Lang, Senator Linda Greenstein, and a representative from Congressman Wayne D'Angelo's office. The conversation centered around the recent tax increases on our community and how we can work together, the Board of Education, the township, the community, and our elected officials, to get the state and the Department of Education to fully understand the uniqueness of Monroe Township and the unfairness to our citizens to not fully fund the school funding reform action of 2008. So, at this time, I'm going to let Dr. Hamilton go into the meeting that we had Monday and a resolution that he's going to be reading.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. This meeting was an outgrowth of concerns that we've been voicing for a while now, particularly as it relates to our quest to get additional funding and get support behind our efforts to get additional funding. And of course, there's criticisms that the argument is not about additional money, but being better stewards about the money that we do receive. But nonetheless, I believe if we are unified in our efforts to recoup, if you will, money that the district is entitled to, we would be in a better position. So, with that said, excuse me, with that said, I've prepared a resolution that I'd like the board to consider. And following this resolution, if the board should approve this resolution, we will ask that we enter into a process where we engage our community members into signing a petition that would help us follow this quest, and I'll share the outline of that petition as well. Joyce, if you would mind giving me a copy of that when you get a chance. But the resolution reads as follows, so this is item J on your agenda. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas, the Monroe Township Board of Education attests that the state has failed to fully fund the School Funding Reform Act of 2008, and whereas the state's failure to fully fund the School Funding Reform Act has resulted in a decrease in state aid to Monroe Township, and whereas this decrease has placed the Monroe Township School District at a disadvantage, and whereas the Monroe Township School District has pursued all reasonable avenues to reverse this pattern, and whereas the Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent of Schools and the Monroe Township Municipal Government, believes a concerted effort between these two bodies may generate better results, and whereas, if the state fully funded the School Funding Reform Act and did not defer payments, Monroe would have received an additional And whereas, if the state continues to fail to fund the formula, it could severely stress the property tax-reliant model to a point where taxpayers would no longer be able to support the high-quality education and supplemental services currently provided to Monroe students. And whereas, if the state had fully funded its obligation to Monroe Township residents in the 2012, 2013 school year, the Monroe Township School budget would have resulted in a slight school tax decrease. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education put the State Department of Education on notice through the distribution of a community-wide petition that the citizens of Monroe have demanded action by the State Department of Education to fully fund the formula in order to offset the impact of the school budget on the local taxpayers.
Second.
Ms. Antellus, Mr. Tesler? Any comments or questions by members of the board? Mr. Leary?
I really think this should be directed to the governor and to the legislature. They're the people who control the money. The State Department of Education is an executive body, and they just implement what the governor tells them to do and what the legislature directs.
We have on the petition, Mr. Leary, it is in fact directed to Senators Greenstein, Benson, and Assemblyman D'Angelo.
I think we should talk about the Senator Sweeney and other leadership, and go to Christopher Christie and put them on notice that, hey, the people in this township are really, really up in arms.
We could add them to the petition and send it to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Mr. Klein?
We had the opportunity last year when Mr. Sciarra, who was the head of the Newark Law Center, he's the one who brought the original Abbott versus Burke, the Abbott decision, for, well, wound up leading to 60% of total state funds for education going to now 31 school districts. After Governor Christie made his huge cuts to us, very little in proportion to the inner-city schools of 31 school districts, the Supreme Court appointed a judge in Newark to hear complaints from superintendents that these cuts affected the quality of education of their students. I asked why we weren't there, and what I found out was because we're over adequacy, which is a bunch of garbage, we could not participate. So, therefore, we had no say in the matter, and the Supreme Court, who has screwed the suburban communities on two decisions that they made, voted to, only rolled back the cuts for the inner city, not to the suburban communities. So, again, Monroe is shut. So, that's something that, you know, whatever you try to do, your hands are tied. So, I just wanted to bring that up to the people that are here.
Anyone else on the board? I think it should be noted, too, that there have been times when the State Board of Education, when they pay, who pays us? The state or the township?
Both. Township, and we receive state aid from the state.
Right. And the state has eliminated their payments to us on occasion, where they'll take a million and a half dollars, a million and a half dollars out of our budget, and then we have to eliminate a million and a half dollars that have gone to the kids. So, we have worked within our budgets to the best of our ability in the past, when the state not only takes away our money yearly, but they'll take away an individual payment. So, if there's no more comments or questions from the board, we'll have a roll call on supporting this resolution.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Provided the modifications I suggested are incorporated, yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Board President, the petition, just for the record, reads as follows, and I'll ask Joyce, Mrs. Sweeney, if she would begin. For those who are interested in signing our petition, we have copies available. But the petition reads as follows. Dear Senators Greenstein, Benson, and Assemblyman D'Angelo, the Monroe Township Middlesex County Board of Education unanimously passed this resolution. In partnership with its community, we submit this petition demanding that the legislators put forth all reasonable effort and resources to demand that the New Jersey State Department of Education fully fund the school funding formula. As evidenced by these signatures, we are a community that believes that the state must fulfill its obligation to the children of Monroe, and enclosed therein is the resolution previously read for the record.
May I say something, please?
Mr. Klein?
Sending it to the Senator Linda Greenstein, Wayne D'Angelo, Dan Benson, you're knocking your head against the wall. Where it should go, New Jersey Department of Education and Chris Christie.
I think that's what Mr. Leary suggested, and we're going to...
But we should show that on that.
Well, we...
We will make that as a cover.
Now, they're signing tonight, so it's got to be stated on that.
Yeah, and we'll do it in a cover letter to the governor and...
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we are going to, I believe it's number five on the agenda, the public forum, and I've noticed a very large crowd here this evening, and I believe that many of you are here to speak to the board. We've always encouraged our community to attend our meetings and have welcomed comments and questions from all our members of the public. As you know... Can we please have it a little quieter? As you know, our meetings are taped so that many of the community have an opportunity to watch us, including our students, and I'm asking this evening, as we move through the public forum, that we all treat each other with the same respect and politeness that we would like others to treat us, and that includes our board members, and I'm asking them to refrain from making any comments unless they're called upon. Usually, our first public forum is limited to comments or questions addressing the agenda. I am suspending that for this evening so that you all have an opportunity to speak to whatever you would wish to. Seeing so many of you, we will adhere to the three-minute rule and limit our first public forum to one hour. There is a second public forum at the end of the meeting. I am requesting that all your comments and questions be asked during your three-minute time limit, and answers, if needed, will follow after the three minutes. At this time, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Anthony Fesielzo ate a question. I have a few questions about the Jamesburg tuition. How much does it cost to send one of our students to Monroe to the high school?
Do you want to ask all your questions at the same time, and then we'll answer you? Because it'll go quicker.
Excuse me?
If you ask all your questions at one time?
Okay, and how much does it cost, how much are the Jamesburg students paying to go to the high school as a cost comparison?
The high school tuition cost that was budgeted in the 2012, 2013 budget was approximately $15,350.
That's for a Monroe student.
That is the high school tuition cost, which is also assessed to Jamesburg students on sending-receiving relationship.
They pay $15,000 per student to go to the high school?
Yes, in the budget, and they pay that on installments every month.
So, it's not costing the taxpayers anything to have a Jamesburg student come over to the high school?
It is not costing the Monroe taxpayers anything to have Jamesburg students attend the Monroe Township High School. That's correct.
Another question about the iPads. How many were lost, stolen, or damaged during the return?
Mr. Dr. Gorman, do you have an answer to that, or should we get back?
I don't have the numbers at my fingertips.
Well, I mean, if it's a couple of hundred, then it's, the bill on the insurance is going to cost a couple of thousand. So, I'm sure you know how many were stolen or lost, don't you?
I think we filed, and I don't have an update from Mr. Goodall, Mr. Washington, but I think there were eight police reports in total filed under that piece out of over 2,000. So, that went through the process that we had set forward in policy and procedure.
Before you stole them, though, you had, before you sold them in the auction, you had to repair them, didn't you? Is that how it worked?
We didn't have to. We chose to put out the most enticing bid for them to get the most value.
As is?
As-is?
As-is, when we went to bid, yes.
Okay, so we didn't have to hand in any to get fixed by the insurance company?
There is no insurance company that we're dealing with for the iPads.
Okay, so they just sold them as-is? Is that, that's the answer?
No, there were damages and repairs, as we've articulated in other board meetings to you.
What did that cost? That's what I was curious to find out. What did that cost?
I don't have the numbers at hand for this meeting, but we've reviewed this in both curriculum public meetings and in Board of Education meetings, specifically at the end of June, as we, the board considered the refresh that it took this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Robert Roach, 18 Yorfield Boulevard. I have one statement and a couple of questions. One, I hope if you, based on these petitions, the board receives, the school board receives additional funding from the state, that that money should be used to offset what taxpayers pay, not to increase the budget. The question is that, for the interest aspect of it, what is the total interest that we paid on the bonding for 2011 and '12, which was the first year we were in the high school here?
The interest for the high school?
Well, the bonding for the, the debt for the high school, that Jamesburg's responsible for a portion of it.
Mr. Roach, we went over those numbers in my office last week.
I think, I think the number you gave me was $4,813,818.
That sounds correct.
Okay. And what is the percent of students from Jamesburg that make up the high school?
Approximately...
And that figure you gave me was 20%.
It's approximately 20%. It's based on actual average daily enrollment that's calculated at the end of the school year, and obviously, the percentage of Jamesburg's ADE in the total average daily enrollment would be multiplied by the interest cost to determine their share.
So based on what was indicated earlier, Jamesburg is paying $600,000, thereabouts, in interest.
That's an approximate number. That's correct.
And 20% of that 4.8 million is $962,764. Why are they paying $300,000 less than we're paying?
Mr. Roach, they will not be paying anything less than their exact calculated ADE as a percentage of the total enrollment. I can assure you that. That will be the calculation. It's an approximate $600,000 number that we're using because we don't know the actual ADE yet.
Now, the tuition, they've incurred interest expense for the 2011, 2012 years. Is that correct?
They have incurred interest costs in that year. That's correct. However, the interest costs are not a component of the Department of Education budget software, and as such, they are calculated manually with the previously mentioned ADE calculation when you adjust the actual costs, which are certified by the state of New Jersey.
Has that been done yet?
For the year ended June 30, 2012, it has not. We have not completed our comprehensive annual financial report where our auditors have audited those figures, and we wait for that to prepare the report.
So then, in other words, it's an estimate. That's why it's being paid not until 2013, 2014, because you don't have the figures for this year's budget. Is that correct?
Jamesburg has not been assessed that interest charge yet. It will be a component in the 13, 14 budget, which is the next one that we're working on. That's the law for the A41, A42 calculation and how it flows to subsequent years.
So the $600,000 is just a projection? It's not the actual figure that will eventually be charged?
Yes, sir. That's how we've always disseminated that number as an estimate.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Mike Salinger, 12 Cabernet Court. My question is, since it seems like we've lost a lot of money, we're going to lose a lot of money, wouldn't it be in our favor if we hired an attorney? It can't cost as much money as what we've lost.
Mr. Gorsky?
Sir, I respectfully take exception to the comment that we have lost money or we are going to lose money.
We have not received money, the proper amount.
We have never lost money. As I mentioned before very clearly, Jamesburg has always paid their actual certified costs.
I'm not talking about Jamesburg. I'm talking about the amount we've gotten back for each student.
State aid?
State aid. Why don't we get an attorney?
We have consulted with a board attorney and also representatives from the New Jersey Educational Law Center, and we are following their directive in action to get our fair share of state aid.
Does that mean we have a lawsuit going?
We could. That's correct. A lawsuit would involve a consortium of other districts as well, and we are following their guidance in that matter.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for this moment. My name is Joel Gelphob. I live at 106 Gaskin Avenue in Monroe. I was at the board council meeting last week. I'd like to ask you the same questions I asked them. Number one, to come out and say your language you're using, that we strongly urge, we very strongly urge, you can say whatever you want. It seems that everybody on this board committee here, on the council that we spoke to last week, their minds are made up. We have, I represent, a lot of people out here that are senior citizens, a lot of people that are on fixed income. I made a statement last week saying, when I moved in here in October of '09, I was supposed to pay $5,400 a year in tax. The company, my company, who I sold my business to, went bankrupt, I mean, less than a year after I sold. I lost 10 years of payment. I'm now facing $11,000 in tax next year. Where do you think you're getting your increase out of my rear end? It ain't there. It's not out of a lot of people here. Monroe's senior citizens can't take hits after getting hit with $2,000 in tax increases for a lot of things, for mistakes with this iPad that we sell at an 80% loss. I would have been happy to pay you and buy some iPads for my six grandchildren and give you 80% of the value. Why weren't we made knowledgeable that this is going on? I'm sure a lot of people here have a lot of grandchildren that would have been happy to purchase it, but this is things that we don't normally hear from you. But you guys have rattled our walls severely, and we are coming back at you severely. We are gonna try and get people on this committee immediately because we don't understand how your budget of $88 million ain't enough. I'm sorry, but that's a lot. Thank you.
Manny Silverman, 8 C Ingram Drive. I'm just gonna add to the previous gentleman's, because he has had most of my stuff that I was gonna talk about. All I know is that I had 32 years with New York, 31 years with New York City Fire Department, and my wife had 32 years with New York State Income Tax. And when they didn't have the money to pay them, it was one of two things. Either, and they, and I'm going back to like 1973 to '75, they were laying off firemen and cops because they couldn't afford them. But what happened was is they stopped the layoffs when they, when they added a phrase that should be very, very popular to this school board with what the gentleman just gave us, which is a wage freeze. Until the state, you know, does right by Monroe Township, why can't we get a freeze? Why, I understand, tell me if I'm wrong, that we just got, they just got 2% raises for the next four years. Why, if there's no money here?
Yeah.
I want to hear an answer.
I'll let, I'll let Mr. Gorsky answer the question regarding salaries.
Sir, that's a very valid point, and I would just like to give you a little information about what the board and some of our collective bargaining units have offered over the last few years. Number one, in 2010, where we received a loss of $4.4 million in state aid, administration took a salary freeze voluntarily that year. In addition to that, the Principals and Supervisors Association took a six-month salary freeze voluntarily. And one of the biggest units that we have is our Monroe Township Education Association, the teachers and bus drivers. And the three-year contract that was just negotiated with the board has salary increases of 2%, 2%, and 2.25% increases in salary, but when you look at the overall compensation and the givebacks in health insurance, the Board of Education is netting actual savings over those three-year contracts. 0% impact on the budget.
Then why is our taxes going up? According to the town council, it's all on you guys.
Salts?
It's not them. They can't do anything. They keep telling us when we come to them, go to you. Here we are.
Taxes is a little more complicated than just the one component being salaries. And I'll be happy, excuse me, I'll be happy to go over a couple of those factors right now. The ratable base shares the tax levy. For the last two years, we've had a decrease in the ratable base by $71 million and $78 million respectively. What that has caused in the 2012 budget year alone is an automatic 5.27 cent increase in the tax rate without any consideration for appropriations. In other words, if we didn't raise appropriations $1, there would have been a 5.27 cent tax increase automatically. What the Board of Education has tried to do to offset that was to allocate about $230,000 of additional state aid award and apply $2 million of unspent bond referendum money against the debt service levy. And as Dr. Hamilton had mentioned before, another significant factor in the tax rate is state aid. If the state was to fund their model, called the state funding formula, Monroe District alone, and this is right off of our state aid award sheet, would receive an additional $6.9 million of state aid. That's not money that would be automatically spent. In most cases, that would be returned to the taxpayers off the levy and would result it in a school tax decrease in the year instead of an 8.7 cent increase.
Doesn't work. It doesn't work because, because we, I read, and it was sort of confirmed, and we were talking about it before, like Old Bridge, people, they're getting 44-point-something million dollars, we're getting 2 million or something. It's a joke. So if you keep talking about 6 million, where I'm talking about 44 million, you're 38 million in the rears before you open your mouth. What are we talking about? The point is that we, that we, that we get off our rear ends and we make waves. That's the only way you get money in this world.
I think Mr. Klein has been asking for that for three years.
Yeah.
And outside of the Board of Education and a few handful of parents, it's been very hard to get that backing that we need to get the fair share from the state, which is why we're asked to have the petition done so that you could support us in that endeavor.
Well, hopefully now you'll get some backing from yourselves, the teachers, the town council, and every, and everybody else has to form this whole coalition. You just can't say, well, Mark Klein is gonna go up in front of Governor Christie and say, give us our money. Not happening.
We understand that.
It seems you don't, or you haven't until now. You really haven't.
We have been asked...
Because this has been going, I have been raised, my property has gone down, my property has gone down in value 55%, but my tax hikes has, have been, with the exception of one year when we went with the lawyers, have been 15% and 20%. You bang us for taxes like, like we're ATM machines. Enough already.
The meeting down in Trenton. Talking about the meeting down in Trenton. Yes?
Hi, my name is Mike Pito. I live at 33 Brandon Avenue. I have three kids in the school system, and to be transparent, I own an iPad, and I like it. Okay? So here to talk tonight about a situation that was brought to my attention about a complaint that was raised about one of our coaches here at the high school, Pat Geroni. And I'd like to address that for my three minutes tonight and show you that there are plenty of parents out there, as well as players, all dressed in purple, that are here to support Coach Geroni. You know, my father coached in Middlesex County for 30 years. I coached in Middlesex County in Somerset County. He was an athletic director at Old Bridge High School. He had three state championships at Old Bridge High School. He became a superintendent of athletics in another school system, and the one thing I've always learned is that parents are going to complain. You can be a great baseball coach, you can have championships, somewhere along the line, somebody's gonna be unhappy. Okay? And I'm sure there are a lot of unhappy people here right now with Joe Girardi of the Yankees, but there's no coach that can ever be perfect. Okay? And I'm one of them. I am far from perfect, and I know even the parents that I coach have complaints. But I would urge the board that if we could, that Coach's complaints should go to the Athletic Director Greg Byer, okay? Because there's never one coach that's ever perfect. Okay? And for what I heard about Pat Geroni, whether it was playing time or some other accusations, I've seen Pat Geroni volunteer with our coaches in the town. I've seen him work with these kids right here, and many of these kids right here have been coached by Pat Geroni, and several of them just came back from the Babe Ruth World Series in Seattle where they took third place in the country. Pat Geroni had something to do about that. So I would ask that we allow Pat to do his job, to get what he has to get done, and if we're gonna use this time to talk about baseball in a board meeting, I'd like it to be about how we can improve our fields and make them look like the football fields, lacrosse fields, and field hockey fields, because our baseball fields in this town stink. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
How do you do, ma'am? Richard Gibbons, 418 Schoolhouse Road. It seems like everybody who's come before this board in the past has always requested for you guys to spend more money for one reason or another. Well, I'm not here to request that. In next year's budget, I'm gonna ask you to spend significantly less. I've had to do it in my own business in the last five years, losing money and still maintain my business. It looks like, from what's been said here tonight, you're not gonna get this money back from the state, even though I wish you would. So that's basically, I'm gonna coin it as a request tonight, that in the next year's budget, find a way to spend less, significantly less. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Flynn. I live at 9 Crooked Stick Place. I need your help in understanding something. I'm like a lot of people here. I've been in the township for six years. I haven't been very proactive at going to town meetings or to the Board of Education meetings. So I think after that large tax increase, most of these people are out here probably for the first time like myself. I need some help. What is the average teacher-child ratio in the school room?
Do you have that information, Dr. Hamilton?
It varies, it varies from grade level to grade level. The high school would be very difficult to give you that number because of AP-level courses where enrollment is small and PE and health classes where enrollment is very large. At the elementary level, we're generally about a 1 to 23. This year, we're about 1 to 24. At the middle school level, that number is slightly, slightly higher. That number is probably closer to 31 to 30.
All right. What's the average teacher salary? Just general.
Average teacher salary is probably around $60,000.
$60,000. Okay, it's not as high as Chicago, then.
Well, we have, we have many teachers who make their careers here in our district, and so a lot of teachers are at the top of their guy. We are seeing, starting to see a rollover now where many of our teachers are beginning to retire and most are being replaced with beginning-level teachers.
The percentage of the budget that goes for administrative costs?
Mike, you know that number? I had that number presented when we had our preliminary budget hearing, and I don't have that committed to memory. I'd be happy to provide it to you if you want to give me a call. Once I get the materials back in the office.
10%, 20%, 30%? I mean, just a general average.
So we generally don't like to, because what happens is we give general numbers, and then they get printed in the paper, and people say that's what you said. So we like to be as accurate as possible.
All right, I'll get your telephone number and...
I'd welcome you to give me a call, and I'd be very happy to provide that information to you tomorrow. I'm in the office in the afternoon after a meeting at the county office.
Okay. I heard a story about the iPads. I don't know if this is true, but that the board had $2 million to spend that could have been returned to the taxpayers to lower tax ratables. In a haste, like most government agencies, they wanted to spend the money, not return it. They spent it on iPads. They got all the iPads, and they found out it didn't work. They had to return them. They had to return them. Apple hit them hard. Out of $2 million, I understand you only got $400,000 back. If that's correct, you just flushed down the toilet $1,600,000 of taxpayer dollars. If this story is correct, I'd like to understand what the Board is going to do to repay the taxpayers $1.6 million.
Mr. Flynn, the story is not true. So let me start and explain the process that we took.
Help us understand.
When we built a new high school, there were funds allocated for technology. It was one of the last things that we had looked at because technology today is very different than it was five years, 10 years, two years ago. So through much research, consultation with companies, corporations, educational firms, visitation to schools, we decided that the best technology at this time for our students was a one-to-one learning environments with this iPad learning tool. That was a decision, we could have made a different decision, and we could have put laptop carts, desktops, and other technologies and spent the same money for that. What, historically, what has happened is that that technology outdates itself very quickly and is worth nothing in a very short amount of time. Therefore, in subsequent budgets, we then have to reallocate expenditures for new technology. This technology is a little bit different. The financial plan from the onset of the purchase of the iPads was to enter into a lease, so we would not necess, or at least purchase option. What happened is the bu-
Excuse me, Mr., Dr. Gorman has the floor.
The initial year, due to the bond referendum, we had to purchase. We were not allowed to lease for the high school. So the next plan was to refresh the iPads into a lease. We chose to refresh this year because financially responsibly, in two years, we were told by several sources that the iPads would depreciate to even a more minimal piece, and we would never get to the financial plan that was proposed to the Board two years ago. So now we are happy to say that we did recoup $470,000 for this first batch and applied it to the first year of a new lease. Subsequently, there is no impact this year in the budget at all on taxes because iPads were not budgeted in there. So that is a rumor that has been brought to me sometimes, that the taxes are going up in the community because of the iPads. So that is one rumor that I would like to tell you is not true. So this year, we have paid the first part of that three-year lease. The budget has then, the Board of Education has then committed expenditures in next year's budget and subsequent budgets to sustain the other payments on this financing plan. This is very, this is different than the old model, which I explained where we used to buy technology, and then we found out in five years that it was outdated and it didn't work. And if you look at some of the laptops even in this room, they're incredibly different than what the technology is. The technology is changing instantly. In addition, and I appreciate you letting me articulate this, this plan, in addition, there was a lot of thought that this technology could possibly eventually become an asset for the district financially, in addition to being the best educational practice to make our kids competitive with the best going to colleges. So I'm taking the educational component out of it, which we are passionate about, that we believe that this is the best educational path for kids. All right? And we could go into that as far as what the learning tool can do. We could have bought laptops, we could have bought all other tools, but this environment in a one-to-one where every kid can have it 24/7 and do things that are really indescribable in a lot of ways 10 years ago, or 20 years when I went, when I went to school, but that's another topic for another conversation educationally. Financially, already in the first year, we've started to see a couple of things. And, and the initiative was always a long-term initiative to measure the effects, both academically and possibly financially also. Last year, we saved over $13,000 in paper from copies from the use, and that, we believe, is a direct impact to the iPad. This year, we are offering a course in iOS development to our students. We are developing policy right now that if a student under our domain, while they're in school, develops an app, which is, if, if you don't know, apps are, are what, what happens on the smartphones. They, they, there's millions of apps created every day, and kids and people can download it for $0.99, whatever it is. If a kid develops an app while going to school here, they would enter into a contract with Monroe, and Monroe could either reap some commodities in the future for it or half or part, but we're, we're developing policy for that piece. In addition, the textbook industry has drastically changed and is transforming right under our, right, every day. The newest technology that works for the iPads is called iAuthor and iUniversity, where kids and teachers may create their own content. That was one of, that was one of the first visional highlights, is that kids would create their content, which in the long term could, could supplement or reduce other supplies and materials, because when kids create and share, it's much more meaningful than just acquiring or being told what content is. Those are just some of the possible financial ramifications that we're looking at that could generate revenue to us. But the, the, what I believe are two of the best things is that, number one, we're always going to have the best, the newest technologies for our kids as they compete in a very global society. So the iPad has the ability to communicate with a classroom in China right now, or India, instantly. Those are the types of academic advantages we want for our kids to be competitive with all students in the United States.
All right. Okay. I understand all that. You're blubbering.
Can we have it a little bit more quiet in here, please? So that we can hear the speakers?
You, you spent over $700,000 to refresh in, in a leasing program. What was the initial outlay expense on the iPads?
I think the iPads cost about $1.1, the first batch.
$1.1 million?
Correct.
Plus the $700,000?
No, no, excuse me. What $700,000?
I'm sorry?
What $700,000 are you referring to?
You said you were leasing it. You were, you had budgeted $700,000?
No, no, no.
You had budgets for the next two years?
Excuse me? The first year, we bought for $1.1. This year, we refreshed or sold the batch. That, in next year's budget, following budgets, there will be, the Board is committed to expenditures for technology, and so, because they believe that that is an important piece to kids' learning, and that will be where the funding comes from in the general budget, which is a commitment by the Board of Education to support 21st century learning. So if that either pushes other pieces out or we have to reallocate how we budget, then that is something that we are internally developing our new budget forward as we progress through the years to come.
Okay, so we've spent about $1,008,000 on iPads for the high school?
No, that's not correct.
Hey, you said you refreshed it and you spent $1.1 million.
Okay, I've, if you would like to continue other conversation with me, I'd love to sit down with you.
Yeah.
I've explained and articulated the best I could at this point. I'm not, it's not about me against you, and all my job predominantly is to give the best tools for kids to learn. So I really do appreciate your comment, but I don't, that's not what I'm driven by.
Okay, I think the people get the message.
Excuse me?
We're blaming the state. I got one more point I want to make. We're blaming the state, and everyone blames the state. What part of financial responsibility don't we in Monroe understand? The state is going broke. The country is going broke. We have a $16 trillion deficit. Our GDP is only $15 billion. We are going broke. What is the plan for this, this committee, okay, to work without state aid? Do you have a backup plan?
Well, your time is up, so we appreciate your comments. No, I'll take it.
I mean, well, we have to have a backup plan because, you know what? You're not going to get any money from the state.
We have been working without state aid for the past how many years? So we, we looked through the budget, we have made our cuts, and I think one of the, one of the points that has been not talked about tonight, in the last 10 years, our student population has grown 2,800 students. We still have to educate those students. We have to find a place for them to, to sit in a classroom. We have to find a desk for them, a chair for them, a course for them. We have to put them in a classroom. We have to find a teacher. These things are all part of our budget, is educating the, the people coming into this district.
Well, I think if you ask the seniors of this community.
I'm sorry, but we have to get to the-
If you ask the seniors of this community how their budgets are going, the rise in taxes-
Thank you very much for your comments.
And the cuts that they have to accept, okay? They, a lot of them went without social security increases for a couple of years. I mean, there's got to be some type of physical responsibility here. You need to understand that you can't get more dollars.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Infuso. I live at 4 Dana Drive. I just want to say that I have an older daughter, Erica, who graduated from Monroe six years ago. She got a wonderful education here. I have a freshman in the high school and a sophomore in the high school, and they too are getting a wonderful education. But I do hear a lot of complaints about the iPads, and I think that if everybody was made aware of what your goals were, what did you foresee as the usage for the iPads? Because I have to say, my son was the first class to get it last year, and at the time, with all the meetings, they said they would be able to download textbooks, which was not the case at all. Basically, it was used as a, an assignment planner. He put his assignments in. It was very rarely used any, for anything else. Now, my daughter is a freshman this year. She has it, and she was given textbooks for every single one of her classes, which I have brought with me. My husband has them over there. There are five of them. They weigh over 40 pounds. She schleps them back and forth to school every single day in her bookbag along with the iPad. And again, I checked the iPad. And, listen, I'm a realist, I'm a teacher, I'm all for 21st century learning if it's used properly. I think that if everybody here is aware of the plans, when you went into this initiative, what were your goals for using the iPads in the classroom?
Dr. Gorman, do you wish to respond?
No. No. I mean, I think it's a valid question. If, if you have, you know, valid answers, I think it'll put everybody's minds to-
So, so the technologies are changing quickly. 16, 1,600 of our students, Algebra I, Algebra II, Geometry, are receiving a new technology called an iBook. An iBook is different than electronic textbook or a paper textbook because it interacts with you. Kids can take notes on it, they could form study guides, there are interactive videos and supports. It's a very different way of doing business, and it's a very new technology. There's also things called eBooks, which are basically just scanning a book in and, and putting it in, and there's also PDF files and subscriptions. The iBooks, we are entering into a research project, an independent research project, to see the educational benefits of kids being engaged in student academic achievement for that. Our goal has, our goals have always been-
Could we please have a little quiet so that we can listen to Dr. Gorman's-
Our goals have always been and remain student achievement, critical thinking skills, creation of content, sharing content through wikis, 24/7 environment. Here's, this was always a long journey, and the start of it was backed into the spending of the, opening of the high school. So by the time we actually received them, it was a couple of days before the first day of school, and we did not have time, and we've talked about this, to prep our staff, our students all nine years. So the first six months were an exploration period, and we clearly told people that. Now, as we move into year two, back to school night from principals, you will hear clearly, clear observable indicators that all students should be using this for a number of things. And I know that the crowd doesn't want me to go on, but there are lots of educational values.
I understand that. But they came home last week with a supply list that they needed binders for every single one of their subject areas, or notebooks and folders, when, if, if the iPad has the capacity for them to do their note-taking and homework and everything there, why do they still need to have the old-fashioned binders and notebooks and carry the textbooks?
So Susan, a couple of things that I want to really genuinely tell you. One of the, one, a couple of things that moving forward we are going to do. We, we need, we are in the plans of a new strategic plan, looking at technology and creating an educational technology committee. We tried to showcase it as much as we could last year. I will personally tell you that despite that, we have to better show and demonstrate. We use the kids at several board meetings. I wanted to bring them here, but we had a feeling that it might not be the right environment for it. They've been out in our community. They're working with several, they've gone to Rossmore and presentations, community of women, League of Women Voters I met with today. We will do everything we can to set up during the year ways to communicate to you how it's being used-
That's fine.
-for, for service, for creation, for all kinds of awesome things that the kids are doing.
That's fine.
If I may, if I may, let me just jump in one second, ma'am. We have been, this, this iPad initiative is a huge initiative, as you can imagine, and we have had several conversations, meetings, public meetings about our status report on, on the iPads. Ultimately, we're in the process of developing expectations for teachers, expectations for students, consistent with the national standards for the use and implementation of technology. So some of the experiences that we had last year, yes, in some classes, the iPads were underutilized. You're absolutely right. But our, we learned from that, that we have to provide more professional development for our teachers, and that's a part of the district professional development plan. We also know that we have to provide more training to our students so that they have better understanding about the use and care of that equipment. So we do have those plans in place.
Okay, and I appreciate that, but I think that before you spend all this money, shouldn't there have been a pilot program and followed? Follow a group of students over a course of two to three years to see if there's any advantage to using this technology in the classroom before you spend, you know, the money that everybody's in an uproar about?
And I think that's where-
I, I, I have to say, my taxes are very high. At least I feel I benefit. I still have two students, you know, utilizing the school and the facilities, but there are many people here who don't. So that money is, is really a big chunk, and when it's not being used properly.
Thank you. I will say that Dr. Gorman and the administrative team did spend about a year doing a lot of research on the iPads. Excuse me. Also, we have had many demonstrations during our curriculum meetings from staff and students who have been using, utilizing the iPads last year. Our committee meetings are always open to the public, so if you'd like to have an opportunity to come to a curriculum meeting when we're doing an iPad demonstration, because there are some kids that are, and some staff, most of them, who are doing amazing things with our iPads. We've seen them.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Nancy Poland, and I reside at 8 Mitchell Drive. First of all, I would like to thank the Board and administration for their efforts on behalf of our children. I am here this evening with other parents of children who play baseball on the various recreation and school teams in our community. Over the past five months or more, there have been accusations made against our coaching staff at the high school level. We are here this evening to let the Board and administration know that Patrick Geroni and his coaching staff have our full support. The accusations that have been made are unsubstantiated, without documentation, false, and without merit. In addition, they are based solely on hearsay and opinions. We are asking the Board to dismiss the- We are asking the board to dismiss the accusations and show support for our coaching staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Lerman. I live at 11 Durrell Drive, 11 Durrell Drive. The iPads, I'm really confused in that you spent, what, $1.1 million and didn't have a clue how to use them. And now, and now what I hear, you're going to develop a committee to look into how better use these iPads? I don't want you to comment because you've commented. With all due respect, we've heard enough. With all due respect now. But that's my feeling that, and I'm, this is the first I've heard from a resident who had children in the school complaining about the function of the iPad, which is amazing. Secondly, are you aware of the recent study made by New Jersey Monthly in which they chose the top 100 high schools in the state? And I looked very closely, and Monroe Township was not included in the top 100. Now, in Middlesex County, in Middlesex County, Mid-Touchen was 19, Highland Park was 67, and JP Stevens was 80. And I looked, and my eyesight, maybe it's not that good. I had a magnifying glass, it was small print. And I didn't find Monroe Township, which is also very disturbing. You had a meeting at the Varesco regarding the budget some time ago. And at that meeting, Dr. Hamilton, you said that, prompted by the residents, that the salaries, that the salaries for educators would be frozen, not frozen, but would put on the table as a possibility that they will be frozen. And it appears that you said that to placate the residents that were there because that never happened. Not only that, not only that...
Yes, it did. I would have, the administrative salaries were frozen.
Teachers' salaries?
Not the teachers.
That's what I'm saying, educators. I'm saying educators.
Sir, that's a negotiable item. The board does not have the authority to impose.
But you negotiated another contract in which we gave 2% raise.
You cannot unilaterally freeze salaries on collective bargaining units. That defeats the purpose of having a bargaining unit.
But you had a, you had a, why could you say no to the 2% increase? Considering that the entire country and the state is finding a problem in supplying you money, and you're saying, well, to the educators, 2% is okay? It really is, it really is not okay. Any increases at this time.
As Mr. Gorsky stated in his comments a little while ago, the 2% raise that we gave them was offset by the give-backs that they gave back to us in healthcare where he did not...
Again, with all due respect, with all due respect, the give-backs. You talk about medical insurance?
Health insurance.
Health insurance. Now, what I heard, not, maybe not recently, but maybe at that meeting, was that the educators were paying 1.1% of their gross salary towards medical, which comes out to be, on a $50,000 income, $750. I know that before I went on MediCam, my wife and myself were paying $1,200 a month. So, what are you talking about giving back? Now, how much does the educators pay towards the medical insurance? What percentage of their income?
I'll let Mr. Gorsky handle this.
Sir, the law stated originally that it was 1.5% of salaries for school district personnel. The law then changed under Chapter 78 to begin a phase-in period of up to 35% of the actual health benefit cost that some of our staff are paying right now. So, that information you just presented is a bit outdated. It's quite steeper than that. The average staff employee is paying about $900 at least.
A year.
On their health benefits.
A year.
A year.
A year. In the real world, in the real world, there is a real world outside, outside the...
But that's a phase-in. That's right now, that we're in the second year of the phase-in.
Also, lastly, make it, lastly, what I like to say is that you see many residents here. It's unusually huge, unusually huge amount of residents here listening to this.
I'm sorry, but your time is up. We have other people that would like to make a...
We expect you to go over every line item going forward and reduce as much as you can. And do not placate us with increasing the budget by, and knowing that the budget's going to be defeated, and then you put $1.5 million in the budget that you know is not going to, you don't really care about. So, you give it back to the residents, and you say, that's good. We expect you to go over every line item and reduce it. We do not want any increases in taxes going forward.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Joe Castelluccio. I'm at 20 Ashley Court in Monroe Township.
Excuse me, before you start, I just want to let the public know that there's 15 minutes left in our first public forum. So, at that time, we're going to go into the rest of the agenda.
Your announcement doesn't cut it to my three minutes, all right?
No, it doesn't.
Okay, thank you. About three or four weeks ago, when I went to my mailbox and saw my tax bill, obviously, I was not happy with it. Spoke to a couple of my neighbors. And as a result, we wound up finding that there were about 50 to 60 people that had the same problem and didn't like what they saw. Hence, we created an organization. And I want to make it very clear to the parents that are in this room, and I'll read our mission statement. We're not anti-education. As a matter of fact, I wish every dollar that you got from our taxes went for education. We're against waste. We're against uncontrolled spending. And that's what we're against. We are a nonprofit, nonpartisan group of citizens in Monroe Township. We're dedicated to restoring fiscal responsibility back into government. We need an adult in the room. Our government has lost its way. We need to focus those in office on balancing budgets by reducing spending and eliminating waste. We will only support those in office and those running for office that understand that austerity is first and foremost. Simply stated, you can only spend what you can afford. We have watched elected officials use taxpayers as if they were an ATM machine. This time is overdue to stop this insanity, and the time is now. Insanity, as you know, we use it as, what's the definition of insanity? It's doing the same thing over and over again, the same way, and expecting different results. I hear everyone here, and I heard it on the council, talk about how it's Albany's, excuse me, Trenton's fault, and how it's Christie's fault. It's always somebody else's fault. But you said before, which is very true, you've been here for 10 years. You say, how long have we been doing this? For 10 years, 15 years? You know, going in, you know going into your jobs that you're going to meet resistance from people in Trenton, and you know what these laws are, and you know how to wiggle and waggle. We hear, we talked about iPads today. Matter of fact, I'll give you my spin on iPads if I have the time. But the point is that spending is the problem, not revenues. We could talk about revenues all day, but it's spending. What we have going on here is unsustainable. We have a $16 trillion deficit in this country. There are cities that are actually going bankrupt. States are having problems, and they're borrowing money. This is a broken system, and we need to fix it. When you have a budget in your own home, what do you do? Do you have to spend it on mortgage or rent? Do you have to spend it on food and utilities? All the rest is a want. Those are needs. We have a problem here with boards that say, wants. Your clock is running fast. That wants are a problem.
No, we give everybody the same three minutes.
Wants are a problem. And we have to understand one thing, that when we go to the mall and we want to buy something we need, and there are 10 items on sale, and we decide to buy those 10 items, we can't go home and tell our wife how much we saved that day. We didn't save money. We spent more. And we have to do that here. Every time you get an opportunity to save money, you spend it. And you have to stop the spending.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. What I want you to do is shoot for every dollar you spend, you cut $2. The system's broken. When you have something broken in your home, you get a repairman. And if that repairman doesn't fix what's broken, you get a new repairman. The elections are coming.
Jerry Kraskowski at Three-Glen Eagle Way. That's a hard act to follow. Let me say that, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Gorsky. He's been really helpful to me in trying to understand these issues concerning funding and with some telephone conversations and some emails. He's really made it a lot more understandable to me. Thank you publicly.
Mr. Gorsky is the best.
Now, that being said, you know, my opinion, and shame on us, is that we've allowed this whole funding debate to fog the real issue of spending and spending priorities by this board. Shame on us. It's not, as the gentleman before me said, a funding problem. It's also a spending problem. I'm one of these people that believe if you didn't spend it, funding would be a heck of a lot less of an issue. Now, let me ask you. You mentioned last meeting that this board was going into a meeting on a Saturday about setting goals and objectives. How many of those goals and objectives talk to the economic issues of running this school system? How do we create more value for our educational dollar? How does that happen?
We had, which we'll be adopting tonight under Dr. Hamilton's report, three school goals. Two of them have to do with finances.
Well, do you be more specific?
Dr. Hamilton will give that report under his superintendent's report.
You know, I look at this budget, and a lot of times when we talk about spending and spending cuts, it gets down, it's going to hurt the children. Now, depending on how you slice and dice this budget, and these numbers are certainly open to some discussion and debate, but there's some probably $40 million that have nothing to do directly with children. It's maintenance, it's transportation, it's custodial services, it's administration, a whole lot of things, fringe benefits that have nothing to do with kids, zero. That's where I think we've got to zero in and start looking in areas that have no direct impact on the children. And that's, to me, what hasn't happened in the past. Because the debate always gets back to every dollar you want to cut, it's going to hurt the students. Looking at this numbers, that's not what these numbers in this budget tell me. Now, this is a very people-intensive budget. So, let me ask you a question. Is it possible, a lot of this is wrapped up in union contracts, to get a bound copy of the union contracts that this board deals with, with its unions, up in the library so some of us can go through these contracts and try to understand better where some of these costs are and what some of the issues may be in these contracts?
We have union contracts. If you would operate from the business office, you will be able to get a copy of the union contract.
I don't want a copy. I'd like to have just a copy put in the library so everybody can look at them. One bound copy in the reference section of the library. That's there for anybody who wants to come, read them, and understand what goes on with the unions. Is that possible?
It's a public document. I believe we can do that. We'll check that out and make sure.
One other quick question. It was my understanding that this board elected out of the state-funded health plans. Is that true? Do we participate in the health, these state-sponsored health insurance programs?
We've never elected out of the state health benefits plan. We've always had private insurance, which I negotiate each year very competitively. Last year, our percentage increase in the health benefits was about 7% on average.
If we participated in the state-sponsored programs, would we save money?
No. The answer to that is no.
So, it's actually cheaper for us to do what we're doing on our own?
Yes, in fact, in fact, we just, the union was just kind enough to enter into a sidebar agreement with the Monroe Township Board of Education to waive a very costly HMO insurance plan and adopt two cheaper alternatives. So, the union, in concert with the board, is doing everything we can to save money.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we have time for two more people. And then, we will have to save everybody else for the second public forum. So, the next two people.
Hi, Chrissy Skirby, 8 Seminole Court. I just wanted to say, I've been coming to Board of Education meetings now for the past three years or so. And I sat on Dr. Hamilton's Budget Steering Committee meeting this past year. As a parent of two children in Monroe schools and the head of the PTA for the Oak Tree and Applegarth School, I can say that the money in the budget is not fluff. It is what is necessary to educate the more than 6,000 students in Monroe Township. And the board has made several cuts over the last several years. For as long as my children have been in Monroe schools, the budget has been defeated every year, and it had, they've had to make cuts. Some of the cuts in the past couple of years have been after-school busing, busing for arts programs such as band and chorus, world language teachers in the elementary schools, the strings program, busing for field trips for elementary students. Assistant principals are now shared among schools. The science program in the elementary school was delayed four years due to budget cuts. Library assistants were cut. Full-time paraprofessional positions are now made half-time to save on benefits and pensions. And there's been reduction in secretarial positions throughout the district. The real issue in Monroe is the dramatic increase in the students. And that is a result of the constant approval of residential communities by our planning board. Eight years ago, you drove up and down Applegarth Road. There were no communities. There were no houses. The community has grown by leaps and bounds. We have, we had no room this year. We had to open up Applegarth School to deal with the overflow of Oak Tree. Last month, the planning board approved more residential communities, which is going to crowd our schools even more. We have no money to build another school. We have no room for the schools. We have no room for the children to educate them. We can't ignore, we can't ignore the problem of the increase in the community. We have to educate our children. The problem here is, you know, the taxes went up, yes. It is not a result of the school budget. That is not what happened this past year. 10% of your...
Excuse me, we will be as respectful to her as we were to the rest of the public.
If I could ask, how much did the budget increase? And how much did that affect our taxes?
The school district budget, which is on a split year with the municipality, and that's an important concept to understand. Half of the tax impact this year is carried over from the school budget last year. So, efficiencies are lagging to get into it. But the school budget went up on the tax levy 3.6% this year. That's an increase of about $145 for the average assessed home. That is a very minority part of the overall tax increase that you're facing. The majority impact comes from the municipal side this year, and it was affected dramatically by three components. Number one, lack of state aid funding to the municipality was cut again. Number two, the significant decrease in ratables due to the economy. And number three, most significantly, was the successful appeals of 1/3 of the residential properties in Monroe requiring rebate checks to be issued from the municipality to homeowners, thus increasing the tax rate.
Okay, Chrissy, you have 30 seconds more.
Okay, I just want to end by saying, I moved to Monroe Township because of the up-and-coming school system. We've had students graduate from Monroe Township High School. They've been accepted into Princeton University and other Ivy Leagues. If you look at the scores, the test scores in the elementary level, Oak Tree School, Woodland School were recognized in the paper for their over proficiency levels. Our schools are thriving, and we do need to continue to have them funded. And if it's through the taxes, that's a state issue. The state mandates that the schools are funded through the taxes. I beg this board not to cut our programs. We need that. Our children need that. The children over there, sitting there dressed in purple, deserve a proper education. Not to have it cut. Thank you.
Thank you. We, yeah, we'll have one more person, and then we'll hold up everybody else to the next public forum.
Hi, my name is Raj Purswani. I live in 6 Mitchell Drive, and I work in technology, cutting-edge technology. I have a question. Most people here, they are here for the tax increase. And I think most people here in the public, they agree that the problem is not funding or revenue. The problem is spending. So, in the real world, outside this, we, before coming up with solutions, like you guys said, you know, getting more funding from the state and stuff like that, in the real world, we first define the problem. So, in the opinion of the public, the problem definition is spending, irresponsible spending, fiscal irresponsibility. In your opinion, what I have heard so far, you know, a lot of deflection towards Trenton and, you know, other sources, what is the problem definition?
Part of our challenge in our district really has to do with the growing...
Part of our challenge in our district really has to do with the growing student enrollment, as Mrs. Skirby just indicated. And as a result, unlike a budgeted home, we have to have teachers who stand in front of those kids every day, we have to transport them. So, while one could argue that there's a percentage of the budget that doesn't impact kids, everything we do in the district impacts kids. Everybody has a job that they do that directly impacts instruction, safety, and making sure that our staff and students have the best services that we can provide for them. So, we have to make certain that we have rooms, heat, utilities, all those things go into the calculation of why our budget is expanding. It's important to keep in mind that even though you've recognized an increase, there have been considerable constraints placed on this budget, including renovations to Applegarth to accommodate student increases. We've also refunded bonds that saved the district millions of dollars. We've also, within that budget, made accommodations to staff that building, so it's not just about opening that Applegarth, we also had to staff that building. So, all of that was done within the confines of the general operating budget. We've also included a new roof on Brookside School. All these things were part of the general fund budget that we made happen without going out and asking for additional funds. And there are, everything that we do in this district is directly related to student instruction and safety.
Why, the lady before me, she just mentioned there, you know, the number of students have increased. Why don't we consider the corresponding increase in number of housing units who are paying additional taxes for the additional students? Why are we speaking only half the truth? Where's the other half? What about the additional revenue you're getting for those additional students?
First of all, our revenue, our revenue is based on a count that goes in on October 15th. So, students that come in after that time are a part of the current budget. You don't reap that, if you will, until the following year, that's number one. And number two, the state does not adequately fund, and I hear what people are saying, it's about being a better steward over the existing, of the funds that we do have, but there are many things that happen in our educational system that we have no control over, and that those things have to be absorbed in our budget. We have, and I'm not gonna get into all the intricacies of the budget, this isn't the forum for that, but the fact of the matter is, while your taxes are going up, our demographics are changing as well in this community, our geography is changing in this community, and we have an obligation to provide for those services. One of the goals that the budget, the board is adopting is really developing a budget philosophy. We have two different sets of marching orders. We have constituents who are here this evening who are saying, our taxes are going up, and we want you to cut the budget. And we have a group of parents who represent the 6,100 kids in our district who are saying to us, we want the best education our kids can get, we want the services, and we want those things that provide our children the opportunities and the advantage that will get them into those schools, those competitive colleges, and those scholarships. So, we have an impossible balance to create, and the philosophy is essential. And lastly, I do wanna make a correction on a comment that was made. The Monroe Township Public Schools was in the top ten schools in the Middlesex County, as recognized in the New Jersey magazine, so that information is misleading and false. We are in the top ten in Middlesex County, inside Jersey, yes.
Okay, so, there was a comment about one-third...
Inside Jersey, that's correct. Thank you for that correction, Mr. Leary.
There was a comment about one-third of the people appealing for tax decrease. Do you foresee a scenario where the other two-thirds of the people appeal? Because the property values have gone down, and their tax should go down theoretically. So, what do you plan to do in that case, if everybody appeals?
We don't have any control over appeals, or what happens in that process...
Well, you do all of their spending.
We have nothing to do with your tax appeals with the municipality, that is not the role of this board, we're not even a part of that discussion. So, I couldn't even begin to answer that question with an intelligent response.
Okay, one question about the iPads, how much did each iPad cost us?
Five thirty-seven? Five thirty-seven, initially.
No, not the initial value, after paying the bonds and interest for thirty years, how much will it cost us?
Oh, I don't know that number.
What do you think, $2,000?
I'm not gonna guess, sir, I'm not gonna just give you a number off the top of my head.
Can you provide that number?
If you're asking a question, I'm gonna give you the best answer I can, and the best answer I can give you for that number, I can't tell you what the iPads will cost us over thirty years.
When can we get that number?
Mr. Gorski has the answer to that question.
You know, that specific answer would take a little bit of research, but I can quantify that by saying that the iPads are gonna last anywhere from three, four years, that's their expected useful life. And the bond financing that supported these iPads was up to a twenty-eight-year period. There's individual bonds sold throughout that whole year, so you can match those three- or four-year periods with specific bond funding over the three or four years. That's according to our bond counselor, McCarter English. So, you're not financing these iPads over twenty-eight years, they're specific bond maturities matched with these three- or four-year useful lives.
You would have done that calculation beforehand, right? Before getting the bond and buying the iPads?
Could I have anticipated that question beforehand?
No, the cost, not the question.
The cost of the iPads?
Yeah, total cost, total cost of ownership. Total cost of ownership is the price you pay initially, and at the end of the term, what you pay throughout. That's called as the TCO, total cost of ownership.
Okay, the initial iPad purchase was $538 for 2,000 units, or $1,076,000 just for the units. That was the initial purchase. We then sold at public bid those 2,000 units for a total of $415,000, plus Dr. Gorman negotiated a $70,000 rebate from the warranty. So, the actual cost, and I refer to the word budget cost instead of loss, is $591,000 for the initial year of iPad initiative for this district.
Why did we sell the iPads?
I'm sorry, but your time is up. You wanna answer that? Huh? No? 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 Nope. I'm sorry, your time is up, and since we've gone way over our public forum, I'm going to close public forum, which I stated at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to make more comments, we will be glad to listen to you at the end of the board meeting. There's another public forum. No, no. Oh, you wanna go to the bathroom?
Oh, jeez. Wants to go to the bathroom.
Oh, what? I'm sorry, there is no, public forum is closed. Public forum is closed. Comments, questions, it's over. And at this time, Mr. Gorski, at this time, Mr. Gorski has a...
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd just like to make one profound point for everybody to understand about the budget. Dr. Hamilton has stated that every year, our district is growing by...
No.
Beg your pardon?
No.
Please.
No, I'm sorry.
Please, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're out of order, I'm sorry, I cannot let her speak.
Please, the point I was making is that the district is growing 250 students additionally every year. At an average of $15,000 per student, that's costing the Monroe Township Board of Education $3,750,000 just to educate the enrollment growth every year. Last year, our overall budget grew $3,182,000. So, we're absorbing these additional student costs and making aggregate cuts to the budget. If I haven't properly explained that because of the disruption, please give me a call, because that's an important point to know.
I know Mr. Klein would like to make a comment, and then we'll go on.
Before everybody leaves, please, I think you'll be interested in this. First of all, the way Jersey funds their schools is archaic. There's very, very few states that fund schools via property taxes. Now, I'm gonna read my statement. As I mentioned a number of months ago, when we tried to make cuts and parents were against it, I said that some states allow all handicapped, disabled residents, and residents over 65 to pay no school tax. I disagree with that. Some states give a 50% cut to these groups. As I looked into this, I understand that there is a bill in the state senate and the state assembly giving true tax relief for residents over 65, though I would add handicapped and disabled to it. According to the bills, residents over 65 would receive a 50% discount in school taxes. But it's been in the files for years, and I tried to look it up, and I can't find it, but we'll definitely check it out. Now, by doing this, yes, it would raise the taxes of families much higher, but it then would force the state to change the way education is paid for. It should be by lottery, income, and sales taxes, and not property taxes. In the state constitution, I paraphrase, "The state is responsible for providing a free public education to all residents of New Jersey between the ages of five and eighteen." It then states that the state legislature is responsible for setting aside funds to pay for free public education for its residents. In Monroe Township, our residents are paying roughly 95% of the total cost of education. That is not a free education, and it is definitely a violation of the state constitution. And those of you that get involved with these tax groups, start to write letters, now you write your letters to your senators and your assembly people, and the governor, you want those bills brought up, discussed, and passed, and if it is not a bill that has prolonged through the series of years, then somebody, one of our elected officials, has to sponsor it and get it back up. It's the only way you could do it and force the state to change the way they fund the schools, and not property taxes, and not on the backs of people 65 and over.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Mr. Leary?
I want to make a statement, because I have been the chairman of the finance committee for over seven years. Now, in that, as has been stated, you go and you take a look at the latest CAFRA on page 136, it shows that in that ten-year interval, we had a 120% increase in the general fund. That sounds wild! The reality is, we had a gigantic increase, 2,800 students. When you go on a per-student basis, it is 36%. Now, that sounds, you know, but then you talk about what is the Consumer Price Index, and that is what, we are a people-intensive process, and it turns out, the cost per student, the Consumer Price Index is 4%. We live in New Jersey, where we're getting hammered every way you can think of by state mandates. We are doing a superb job, not a rotten job, and put that in your pipe and smoke it.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Excuse me? Excuse me, you're out of line? Excuse, he's a...
You're out of order.
Excuse me, you're out of order. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm not, the public forum, the public forum is over, I'm asking you to please take your seat. He is a board member. Excuse me. At this time, we're gonna go to the superintendent's report with Dr. Hamilton.
Okay. A few things before I begin my report, I wanna thank the entire staff for a smooth, painless school opening. Even with the new school opening and new student enrollments, our opening was very successful. I have to especially acknowledge Jerry Take, who is in here this evening for the exceptional job at Applegarth, and for the rest of the custodial crew for the work done to ready our buildings, along with Mike Gorski for all the behind-the-scenes work that goes into getting the school ready.
Excuse me, but...
Madam Board President, Madam...
Dr. Hamilton is giving his report, so I'd like to have some quiet in the room, please.
Although our enrollment data is not included in this report until next month, I want you to know that our current enrollment as of today is 6,125 students. In June, we closed at 5,961. Also wanna commend the board for an excellent board retreat on Saturday, August 25th. I know you give so much of your time on a voluntary basis, and to commit to a Saturday to work on establishing new goals is really appreciated. Tonight, there's a resolution that will formally adopt the board goals, one of which includes the development of a strategic plan that includes six design teams in the following areas: community, communication, community engagement and business partnerships, instruction, facilities, technology and the arts. We're asking members of the community if you have a particular interest or wish to serve on the design team, that you indicate so by signing up on one of these committees tonight. Mrs. Sweeney has those sign-up sheets. And also ask the board members, I'll include in my Friday update, if you would identify a committee you would be interested in serving on, that would be great. So, moving on to the superintendent's report, it is recommended by the superintendent that personnel items A through X be approved by roll-call vote.
So moved by Mr. Kaufman, and who seconded that? Mr. Masters? Is there any comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton? Mr. Klein?
My only question is on L, where it says, following personnel for school goals committee at a stipend, a stipend of 286, that's without my glasses. I don't talk loud enough. On L, isn't this something that they can do during the course of the day, as compared to having to pay extra? I know it sounds like a small amount, but wherever we can cut, we can cut.
We generally try to avoid opportunities that will pull teachers out of classrooms, because ultimately, we gotta put somebody else in there, so there would still be a cost associated with that to cover those classrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the board? Seeing no one, we'll have a roll call. Mr. Gorski?
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Peroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Antelis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bulipanovic?
Yes.
Madam Board President, personnel items A through X passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to board action items, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that board action items A through H be approved by roll-call vote. J was already read, and I will be read separately.
Is there a motion and a second?
I second it.
I didn't get a first.
I firsted.
Mr. Klein, Mr. Leary.
I move it.
Comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton?
I is gonna be a separate.
I is gonna be separate, taken separately. Okay, seeing none, we'll have roll call.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Peroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Antelis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bulipanovic?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through H passes.
Thank you.
And moving on to item I, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education participated in a board retreat on Saturday, August 25th, 2012, and whereas this retreat was facilitated by New Jersey School Boards Association Field Representative Gwen Thornton, and whereas each board member in attendance was able to express the many things the district has accomplished within the last year, and whereas the board believes considerable progress has been made on the currently established board goals, now therefore be it resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education formally adopt the following board goals. One, to develop a strategic plan around the following six key areas to engage the community and maintain instructional excellence: communication, community engagement and business partnerships, instruction, facilities, technology and fine arts, and fiscal accountability. Two, to review, evaluate, and assess current programs and structures, including identifying and developing a schedule for review. This coming year, the focus will be on the technology and structures in establishing standard operating procedures. And three, to develop a budget philosophy and parameters and framework for developing the 2012, 2013 budget, and hereby formally adopt these goals and authorize the superintendent to implement strategies necessary to accomplish these goals. And a correction on item three, that budget philosophy should really govern our next budget cycle, should be 1314.
And I think it would be not formally, but formally?
Formally, yes, thank you.
Motion and a second?
Second.
Mr. Masters, Mrs. Antelis, comments or questions on the school goals? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mrs. Antelis?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Tesler?
Just real quick, we spent, you know, that entire morning on the 25th going over these goals, and, you know... over these goals and, you know, we, we hear the issues of the taxpayers, including myself, my taxes went up almost two thousand dollars alone. And one of our goals and one of our, for the next coming year is to start reviewing every single program and see what's successful and what's not and where we can make cuts. But, you know, everybody has to give us this time to go through the process and make educational decisions on what we can cut, not just cutting things just to cut things. So we hear you and we are going to be working on that.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Mrs. Antelis?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
I abstain as I wasn't in attendance.
Still noted. Mr. Kaufman?
Same, same reason.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, item I passes.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, we will move on to number seven, the Business Administrators' Report with Mr. Gorski.
Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that board action items A through N be approved by consent roll call.
Second.
Mrs. Antelis, Mr. Leary. Any comments or questions for Mr. Gorski? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes, but I have to recuse on I three.
I three, so noted. Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Antelis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, board action items A through N passes.
Okay, thank you. Regarding to the Business Administrators' Report, starting with our October board meeting through Mr. Gorski, we'd like to introduce you in installments to the budget process and the calendar that our school district must follow in regard to passing our budgets and what has to be in the budgets and what we do, how we do it and why we do it. So, do you have anything to add to that or?
No, ma'am. We look forward to introducing that at the next meeting.
And I think we're gonna start with what a cap, what a cap is and what we have to follow and what we don't, what's mandated and what's not. So we look forward to that report in October. At this time, we're going to the Board President's Report and I only have one thing. In two thousand and twelve, this year, when we opened up our school, oh no, I have it wrong, in two thousand and two, our total student enrollment was three thousand, three hundred and ninety-three students. This year, we opened the doors with a little over sixty-one-hundred students, as Dr. Hamilton just mentioned, for an increase of approximately twenty-eight-thousand students the past ten years.
Twenty-eight-hundred.
What did I say, twenty-eight-thousand? Woo! We need to build new schools. The twenty-eight-hundred students in the past ten years. We are still a growing community. We are expecting to increase our student enrollment about two hundred students per year for the next five years, which would give us another thousand children in our district. We need to start looking at where we are going to house all these kids. We also need to look at our facilities and the maintenance needed for our schools. For instance, many of our schools need new roofs. There are sports fields and courts that have to be addressed. Some of our schools are nearing capacity, so we need to figure out how to, how to move things around so that we have a place for every child. The Boiler and Applegarth Elementary School needs a lot of attention, if not a replacement. As Board President, I'd like to put in place an ad hoc committee on growth and facilities, which would include members of the Board of Education, administration, staff, members of some students, parents, members of the adult communities, and people in our community who don't even have children in the school district. The purpose of this committee would be to look at our school growth in the next five years and our facility needs and come up with a plan on how to address these needs that the public could support. The committee would begin work in October and meet for approximately six months. The meetings would be scheduled at different times during the day and during the week. We'd have a weekend meeting, a day meeting, a weeknight meeting, so that the community members would have, who wish to participate, would have the opportunity to attend. At the end of that time, the committee would make a recommendation to the board on the direction they would like to go. I know the board has been talking about this for a number of months, so I just wanted to open this up to the board if they have any comments or questions or concerns. Or if it sounds like a good idea.
I think it sounds like a great idea.
It is a definitely good idea and we should go forth at as rapidly as possible. As you say, we are continuing to grow and growth requires many, many considerations and the quicker we get on this, the better off we're gonna be.
Thank you.
I want to join.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. I'm sure your participation would be much appreciated. So if, if there's anybody, or we're gonna open this up to the public, if anybody wishes to be a part of this committee, join this committee, we're gonna ask that you call the Board of Education office or Dr. Hamilton's office or me with your name, address, phone number and email, and we will get in touch with you when this committee is ready to be set in place and start working. And the help of this community would be very much appreciated. So at this time, we'll go to committee reports. Is there any member of the board who has a committee report to mention? Mr. Tesler?
Thank you very much. I believe this was yesterday, we had a personnel committee. There was just a few short things on the agenda. Dr. Hamilton brought us a revised job description for the assistant to admin, the assistant admin to the superintendent. And in order to save money, we decided to go task Dr. Hamilton with trying to either split those tasks other ways or creating some smaller part-time position that wouldn't cost as much, but also would help with these duties that now are burdening other people in the central office, such as Dr. Hamilton and Jeff Gorman. We got a status update on the central office support staff negotiations and that process should be complete soon and I'll report that when that process is complete. We also were presented with a non-affiliate contract. Sample contracts were viewed and reviewed again by the committee. Each non-affiliate employee now will have their own contract, which delineates all their entitlements and benefits and what they, what they get, and that will be renewed each year. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tesler. Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
Sure, we had a curriculum committee meeting this evening. We went over some curriculum documents for economics, three D arts, social studies for grade six, grade eight, prevention and care of athletic injuries, and we also went into a deep discussion on the district's chemical hygiene plan. Over the past few years, we've been spending a certain amount of money to support our chemistry program in the district. Recently, we've gone, over the past couple of years, of spending approximately eleven-hundred dollars for chemi, chemical equipment back in two thousand and nine to what appears to be on this chart for two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve school year to be approximately, again, it's a bar graph and there are regions of it, what looks to be about thirty dollars. We've re-engineered the program, got tighter controls over the types of chemical experiments that we're using and the type of chemicals that we're buying to be a little bit more fiscally responsible for our chemistry program as well. In addition to that, we heard a presentation by our Director of Pupil Services over our screening of our kindergarten students as they come into the district and the processes that they go through in the, what's called the Brigance Program for screening of students that might have special needs. The philosophy here is the earlier we get on to prevention and special needs students, the less expensive it is over the duration of a student's education in, not just in Monroe, but in really any school. Additionally, we spoke about a program that's going to be offered to our district students who are on free or reduced lunch. Comcast will allow or provide a service to our families who are on free and reduced lunch, internet service at their cost, not Monroe's cost or the board's cost, of nine dollars and ninety-five cents for unlimited use of internet to their homes, which will help facilitate some of the things that we've talked about earlier this evening. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Send the other committee reports. Mr. Masters?
We had a Buildings and Grounds Transportation meeting, the twenty-eighth, after an excellent tour of Applegarth. On that agenda, there was a county request for a bike path trail that actually connects the soccer, new soccer complex to Thompson Park, I believe. We reviewed the bleacher structural update, that went really well. We had an update on Applegarth, great job to all involved, looks great. We discussed purchasing or possibly purchasing some of the trailers to offset some costs. We had an MECA update, also looks excellent. The Brookside Roof Project's going well, it's on schedule. And we had a traffic flow change, which I almost ran over that sign outside, because I wasn't ready for it to the outside because of possible safety issues. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Masters. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll go to number ten. Is there any other new business or business by any member of the Board of Education? Mr. Klein?
Just one statement while the gentleman is here. About two meetings ago, I had lost a bracelet that my wife gave me, gold bracelet, and she passed away. And I came back the following day and I asked one of our custodians, Mark Lupo, whether he found anything in the room, and the answer was no. So I basically wrote it off, figured it's lost, you know, let it go. I was pleasantly surprised by a phone call the Friday before Labor Day, Friday night, that Mark, and Mark is right over there in the corner, had found the bracelet when they moved furniture. Now anybody else would have taken the gold bracelet and cashed it in. That's an honest man. And I thank you. So you know what my feeling is and I just, there's no words. And not only that, when I went to give him a reward, he refused to take it. So God be good to you and your family. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman? Mrs. Antelis?
Now, I've heard a lot of things here tonight about the board. I'm probably the board member who's been here the longest, about twenty years. And I just want to clarify some statements. As long as I've been on this board, this is not free spending. I just want to go over some things maybe that people are not aware of. For instance, if a juvenile in this town is locked up in a juvenile detention facility, we have to pay the state twenty-eight-thousand and it might even be more by now, each child. We don't spend that for our children, but the state says we have to do that. We have so many mandated costs over the years. Somebody passed some legislation that said mandated cost, state pay, state mandate, state pay. In twenty years, I've never seen that happen. They came to us and said, you must now teach all your children a second language, but we're not giving you any money to do it. It's up to you to do it. Time after time, we had to remove gas tanks once. We had no choice. They didn't like our gas tanks at transportation. Over a hundred thousand dollars. But this board has managed to work within those parameters. We've had budgets go down, that's okay, every year, and we work within those parameters. If any of you have been to Applegarth School, it is absolutely beautiful and every bit of work that was done inside that school was done by our employees. We did not ask the public for any money for renovations. In fact, as long as I've been on this board, only once did we go out for renovations and it failed. We never asked again. We belong to consortiums of gasoline so that we purchase with the whole Middlesex County to keep the cost down. Somebody mentioned the state health plan. I'll tell you why we don't have it, because they mandate that you give everybody full family benefits. We don't do that here. We wait until you're tenured to do it. We save that money. Do we lose employees? Yes, we do, but we want to be fiscally responsible and we felt that was the best way to do it. When I started on this board, there were twenty-five-hundred children. Now there's over six thousand, and yet we've only built two brand-new schools. So we try to accommodate them the best we can. And what I would like to ask, I have a real problem that when developers, and I don't care what they're developing, whether it be senior housing, whether it be single-family, should be giving to our schools. Now, I know it's against the law, but what would happen if the township said, you're not building here until you give thirty acres to that school district? Take us to court if you don't like it. That's how we should be acting. I've heard of other districts that have done this.
They have all did.
They have.
Last year.
Yes. And other, and it's time for the township. Now, I heard Dr. Hamilton talk about getting together with the township, trying to work things out. This is something that should be worked out for us. I'd like to ask you, Mrs. Kolopanowicz, to please send a letter to the mayor requesting that a board member sit on the planning board. At least then, we have a voice. We can't keep absorbing, at one time, it was three hundred and fifty students per year. The houses, I mean, just drive around, you see it, they were going up like that. Yet did we get anything? One time, the township gave us the land for Oak Tree School. That was it. That was the only savings we've ever had. We've put solar panels on. We've put water gathering. This board tries everything we can to stay fiscally responsible. I've had three children go through the school. My baby's twenty-five right now, but I still pay taxes. I don't live in a retirement community yet, but I will. And I, I feel the same way. My taxes, I live in a condominium off Route Thirty-three. My taxes went up over seven hundred dollars. I don't even own a piece of land. So please don't sit here and think that we tell them, just go ahead and spend whatever you want. It's not that way. We refinance bonds, we sit hours in meetings. We were just talking about how to start generating revenue, because now we're allowed to do that, and that's important. Let's start bringing in some money. Let's start selling some signs out there. Let's start owning our own daycare centers. Let's bring the revenue here into Monroe to give to the taxpayers. We've had to have trailers at a cost of millions of dollars. We got rid of it, now what's happened is our schools are getting crowded again. So I just wanted to explain that, you know, I understand your frustration. For those of you who don't know me, I run a committee for Holocaust survivors here in town. These are people who came to this country because they lost their entire families, okay? I've interviewed them on Channel Twenty-eight. I feel what they feel, okay? They struggle hard to make it here. I don't want to see them taxed like this. We are doing everything we can and we're gonna try to do more to get this budget under control and these taxes to stop. But we do need you. I've said this before, I tried to talk to Senator Rush Holt three times, tell you what's going on. Every other state in this country gets about fifteen to twenty-one percent of funding for special education. New Jersey gets twelve. You know how much money that is? I don't understand it, he's on the education committee. Why are we not getting more money? You know what, I've heard up in Washington when I went, oh, New Jersey's rich. I don't know about you folks, I'm not rich. I can't afford this either. You know, these are the people that we also have to talk to. The last meeting, people said, oh, don't complain about the funding, but the funding's important. Give us our fair share. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things I want to bring up, just to dovetail on what Amy was saying before. Forgive me, Joel, I believe? Okay. As we go through the next few Board of Education meetings, I think it's a good idea that we start addressing some of the, the real basic factors of what really does make Monroe unique and situations that we have in this town. Because while we like to say and try and move the monkey or the blame to say, oh, it's the state or it's, it's not us, but it's somebody else, right? There are some mitigating factors which you cannot escape living in the township of Monroe. Some of those things, while they may seem insignificant or small, they actually come with an extremely high price tag. Item number one, busing. Busing has been a target for, for many, many years in our budget and while it's, some might say, well, because we have our own bus fleet, there's a lot of cost involved with that. Well, I, I grew up in a different town. I grew up in Union. And in Union, you could walk to your schools, because we had things like sidewalks. You can't walk to the building that you're sitting in. There are no sidewalks that you can walk on to get here. There are no sidewalks that you can walk on to get to the school directly next to us. us. And these are even for buildings that older kids can get to. So we have to bus our kids to our schools, because Monroe also happens to be 43 square miles large. So even if you have families that live very close to schools, we bus them. Why do we bus them also? Couple of reasons. It's much safer. If you've ever gone past any of our schools in the morning, when the fleets arrive, especially at the elementary level, it's a highly efficient process. No child gets off any bus until they all arrive. And then they get off at the same time, and it's done in exactly the reverse at the end of the day. Why is that better? Can you imagine if we have schools with hundreds of children to have? You know, we live in Monroe. Let's face it. My wife, God bless her, used to drive our kids to the bus stop. And you could see the bus stop from our house. So forget about sidewalks, right? We live in Monroe. That's what they do, right? Can you imagine all those parents driving those kids to school? Even the ones that live close? It's just an accident waiting to happen with thousands of little children coming into that very small confined area. When I went to school, the buildings were separated by vast distances. The elementary school is one side of town. Middle school is somewhere else. So you only had a small amount of buses that come in. Barclaybrook, Brookside, two shared areas, many buses. I don't know how many show up there in the morning, but I'm going to say at least 30 buses show up just between those two schools. So we also happen to run, and Mike could talk about statistics, a very highly efficient process here with running our multi-tiered busing. So we get a lot of bang for our buck. But it does cost money, no doubt. We also do something in the district that has, over time, had a disproportionate effect to Monroe Township. And that is, to save money for the many, many years we've been around since I've been on the board, we've been doing a lot of special services for our students who have special needs in the district. And I have to tell you, children with special needs, the price tag of that goes up a little bit, because they need other things, maybe aids to walk with them, or other special services, or other programs. It costs a little bit more for a student that needs special needs than students that don't. The reality is, because that became such an incredibly good program, we brought a lot of those students back that we were sending out to add a placement district, which actually costs even more money. And that netted an unforeseen situation. We got to be so good at it, people were moving to Monroe because we did that. So Monroe also happens to have a disproportionately high number of students compared to the state average with students with special needs. So Joel, I invite all of you, as we go through the next few weeks, to talk about the things that really go into making the school budget what it is and how the money is spent. You have to understand that this, we are all in this together. This is not a township issue. This is not a Board of Education issue. This is not a retired citizens issue. This is not a parents' issue. We are all vested interests here, and we all pay taxes here, and we all want the best for our kids, as was articulated by Joe a little bit earlier. So please understand, over the next few months, we'll go over a lot of the things, because a lot of you are new to the process. Trust me, we have other board members that are senior citizens that were on the other side of the fence, and over time have come to realize that there is a lot of, there's a lot of mechanics in what makes this school district run. It's very easy to point the finger to the school board that's across the street on how much money we spend for the taxes. We are 10 times the size of the municipality. They have a couple of buildings. We have like 10. We have a bus fleet. Okay, they have dump trucks and stuff. We have teachers. You know, they kind of don't have that. So there's a lot of things that come into the costs that are on this side of the fence that are not on the other side of the fence. So let's just say we're all in it together and leave it at that. Lastly. Over the past, this is the second opening for this high school, right? And over the past few months, we've had Buildings and Grounds meetings. I've asked repeatedly to try and get the issue about a dedication plaque put on this building. This is the only building in the district that we do not have a dedication plaque. We've opened the building up, and here we are, second opening. So I'm going to make this real short and simple. I would like to make a motion that we put on this building a dedication plaque, listing the names of the board members that were part of the initial approval of this building and the additional funds that were produced or required, just as the past practices that we've done on the other buildings, the same format, I believe it was the board and the architects and whatever else that we use in the format for Oak Tree. And I'd like to make a motion that we do it and just get it done.
I second it.
I second also.
Okay. Okay. So there's a motion on the floor from Mr. Kaufman to, do you want two plaques for both referendums?
Maybe on the same one, whatever, as long as it's, as long as it represents...
For the sitting board and administration at the time of the referendum.
Sitting the board and the administration at the time, both issues were voted on and approved by those boards.
Okay. And it's second by Mr. Klein. Comments or questions?
I want to rise to a question of privilege and register a complaint. This has gone through Buildings and Grounds several times, and I think we actually have it tabled in the Buildings and Grounds Committee to be discussed again at the committee level. So I think this is totally out of order.
I agree with Mr. Masters.
Committees make recommendations.
It's not debatable. Question of privilege is not debatable. If you want to usurp the committee process, feel free to usurp the committee process.
We have in the past.
Can we do this?
I agree with Mr. Masters. I think this needs to go into committee, just like it always did.
Check with Mr. Gorsky that the motion can be, we can vote on the motion tonight.
It's a motion. I mean, it's...
The committees make recommendations to the Board of Education upon the deliberation that occurs in those events. But I don't believe that would prohibit the board from introducing a motion with a quorum present at a public meeting.
Because I think we've done that before.
Yes, we have.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Then I would respectfully resign from every committee on the line.
Did you have a comment? Just a comment. When the committee decides, because I agree with Mr. Masters, when the committee decides, whatever they have to do for the plaque, I would like to have the Board of Education solicit funding, maybe from PTAs, so it doesn't, we don't have to pay taxpayer money to do that. Or even the Monroe Education Foundation. Just a recommendation. Just a recommendation.
Mr. Teszler, that would come out of the referendum for the new high school. The money slipped over from the referendum.
Well, I mean, we can return that back to the taxpayers, and we can solicit that from PTAs or the Monroe Education Foundation to pay for the plaque.
The plaques are bought and provided.
Okay. Of the school funding. Yeah. Ma, Patrice?
Just for clarification, because it's been so long, I know the initial discussion, and there was no common decision, or rather consensus of the entire board. It's going back, is it, what you're saying, Lou, it was supposed to go back to committee? Did we have a time or a...
There was a consensus at the committee level, the original Buildings and Grounds...
Oh, by the committee?
Mr. Gorsky. At committee level, for something very different from what Mr. Kaufman is recommending. That was, I guess, tabled for more discussion. It hasn't been discussed again.
Well, I believe it's been discussed a few times in Buildings and Grounds, and there was never...
Never resolved.
Exactly. It's never been resolved.
So we have a committee proposal that we're now altering, in my opinion.
Well, if it's never been resolved, we never had a proposal.
I disagree with that. With all due respect.
Okay. So I apologize. I just, then I clarify, there was a recommendation by the committee, but there was not a consensus or motion to appease the majority of the board.
It was a consensus at the committee level, yes. That's correct.
And I know that at the time, my opinion was stated, that I do understand everyone's individual opinions, but in the past, and it was just typically policy, whoever was sitting on the board for whatever school is built, the sitting board, the sitting administration was put on the plaque. And I, didn't we agree to do a separate plaque of who came into play afterward?
Well, we had talked about doing...
We had two referendums.
Yeah. But we were talking, you mean other people besides the sitting boards?
Well, I know the problem became, the now-existing board had some issues with that being the process, when it had been the process in the past.
Yeah. Because I had talked about doing a, like, the MEF has a tree in all of the different schools, so taking the tree, with the leaves on the trees, and putting the members of kids first, and the members of the freeholders, and the members of the township, so that everybody could be represented, but the plaque would still be the sitting board. I know I brought that up to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. Mr. Klein?
I understand where Lou is going. I was at the meetings when they discussed the plaque. And we spoke about what Lou said, and then other people wanted, the current people on the board, and superintendent, and whoever else was involved to be on it. Just going to make one statement, which I said then, no matter what you decide on, and if it's decided that you're going to put all the people that are on the board as of today on the plaque, I want it on record, I do not want my name on the plaque, because I had absolutely nothing to do with the building of this school. So whatever is decided, and if it does come out that you're going to put all the current members on, I want my name left off.
Anyone else? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Kaufman to have two plaques with the sitting boards at the time of the 2003 and 2008 referendums? Is that your motion, Mr.? And that's second by Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antalis?
No.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
No.
Mr. Teszler?
No.
Kolopanowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, the motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business by members of the Board of Education? Mr. Masters?
Just wanted to clear up something I heard today. The conversation, comments from the public is great. Somebody had insinuated that Mr. Gorsky might be padding the budget intentionally in order to give back tax money later on, and I think that's totally out of order. Mr. Gorsky would never do that, and Mr. Leary would never even let him do that. So I just want to make sure I clear that up. Somebody did say that. The other thing that somebody said was, "Maintenance, transportation, things such as maintenance, transportation, and custodial don't directly affect children and our fringe benefits." I don't know how you can actually say something like that when there's some of the most important departments we have here. And as Lou said before, the increase in children, the number of children, is a bomb that's waiting to go off here. And I really think we have to start looking at what we're going to do. If we don't address that, I mean, they're building my house, 6:00 AM, they're up nailing stuff in my development. So they are building and putting people in as fast as they possibly can. And these are four bedroom homes. So I think we have an issue we really have to address, and this ad hoc committee is going to do it right.
It's got to be started right away.
Well, to add on to Mr. Masters, we have some very old schools in our building that are in the great shape they are because of our maintenance and custodial staffs. And I think without them, we would be in a bigger problem than we are now. Any other business?
Kathy?
Mr. Teszler?
Just another point on Brookside School. My wife is the chair of the Barclaybrook, Brookside Memory Book Committee, and she's in the schools all the time. And we didn't just put a roof on Brookside School this year because we felt like spending the money. Ms. Alvich, or Dr. Alvich, used to have to put buckets all around the school when it rained, to catch the rainwater. That's how bad the roof was. So when we do these projects, we do it because there's a need to maintain our buildings. That roof was the original roof from when the school was built in the early 90s, and it was desperate need of repair. I wasn't part of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, but from the reports, I understand they could have kept a similar roof, but they went with a different type of roof, which saved how many? A lot, a few hundred thousand dollars, if I'm wrong on that. So when we put on the roof, we wanted to get the best bang for our buck, just like when I had to put new roof on my house a few years ago.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we will go to our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10:4-6 through N10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: personnel, employee number 003190, and legal advice. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. Motion to go into closed session. Mr. Klein?
I'm over.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leary. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? At this time, we will move into closed session. At this time, the board will reconvene into public session, and we go to our public forum. Again, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to our microphone and state your name and address for the record, and we will still adhere to our three-minute rule. Sorry that you had to wait so long.
My name is Lex. I'm a senior. I go to Monroe. I'm a student athlete. I'm taking a full course load of AP classes. I participate in mock trial, National Honor Society, French Honor Society, Youth in Government, Model UN, the Conference on National Affairs, and I'm sure I can come up with a bunch of other things. I've been a three-year varsity athlete. I left my house at 7:00 o'clock this morning. I haven't eaten since my 10:30 lunch, and I've been waiting for you for an hour and 25 minutes. I'm bored, and I'm ignored. You cannot ignore your student body when they come to you. I understand that you have rules that you have to adhere to and procedures that you have to follow. I had come home from a Monroe game at South Plainfield. It's a pretty long drive. Two games. It was a doubleheader, varsity and then JV. And I wanted to just bring up a few points about busing and the troubles that we're having with that as athletes, as students, and iPads from a student's perspective. And I was rudely shut down and ignored, and I believe that I was mentioned as a disturbance. As a student, I feel that the Board of Ed does not care about our student body and what we have to say. I'll leave my points that I had initially wanted to make for later, because there's not really anybody left to hear me.
We are. We are. We're behind you.
I appreciate it. I will be back, maybe, because I have two jobs that I have to work to, and I'll make my points then. Have a nice night.
Folks, this young lady waited...
Could you please give your name and address?
My name's Jerry Briganti. I'm from the Renaissance of Monroe. That young lady, I have to give her a hand. I think that you all disrespected her. You could have given her two minutes of your time, and there's always rules that can be broken, okay? And you could have broken that rule for that young lady. And I totally disagree with all of you for not doing that. Now, I'd just like to bring up a point. I am a senior, okay? And for my recommendation, okay, 40% of the Monroe Township is 55% adult communities. What would you people do if we did not exist? Who would pay all these taxes? Right now, we are actually paying, 60% of our taxes go towards the Board of Education. We do not have children. 60% of our taxes go towards the Board of Education. We do not have children. If we did, boy, oh, boy, are we lucky to have a young kid going to school at the age of 70 or something like that. But 60% of our taxes are going to the Board of Education. Why is that? We don't mind supporting the Board of Education, but not at 60%. Have a heart. Like Mr. Klein says, we should. 50% of our taxes should not, should only be paid, not 60% of what we're doing. I think it's a crime. We are being raised constantly. We are on fixed income, and I'm gonna tell you something, that if we get raised again, many people will lose their homes because they cannot afford it. They will move out of Monroe, and that will be a disaster. We need people, uh, communities are still being built here. We still have 55 adult communities being built, and people are moving in. And when they move in and all of a sudden they took a look at their taxes, it's unbelievable. They're better off staying at Staten Island where they had a big home and paying $5,000 for 4,500 square feet of living space. Come on, folks, let's think about this here. Look at the seniors. We support the Board of Education, but we can't support everything. Thank you.
Good evening. Howard Cohn, 82 Country Club Drive in Monroe Township. It's been a real eye-opener for me tonight. I've never been to a Board of Education meeting in my life. I've never been to a town council meeting in my life, and shame on me. So tonight was a learning experience, and the learning experience was very interesting. I listened to you, the Board. I listened to the public comments, and everybody has a valid point. But I, but I come away from this thinking about one thing. It appears to me that there's only one way to make a point, either with you, or the county freeholders, or the state government, or the federal government, and that's based on numbers. Apparently, the more people that you have that are gonna sign a petition, the more attention you're going to get. So I ask you this question in all sincerity, and it's a problem throughout the state of New Jersey, but I'd just like to know what the Board may be thinking, could be thinking, or would be thinking. Have you considered, as a Board, to get together with the other school districts, either in Middlesex County, or in central New Jersey, or in the state of New Jersey, to consolidate in order to accommodate, in order to cut costs? Because apparently, the only thing that's going to make some type of impact is we, the voters, significantly banding together to get rid of all the rascals. The laws I hear are archaic, and I understand that. And I understand that there are laws that you have to comply with, and I sympathize with you. But I'm a taxpayer. I like living in New Jersey. I don't want to be forced out of New Jersey, as I honestly believe some people will be forced out because of the high cost. So I just ask you this question. Have you thought about and/or have you considered consolidating with other school districts?
Yes, twice. And we did a feasibility study, and it would've cost the Monroe Township taxpayers an additional $400 a year. And so we decided not to do it.
Thank you, Amy.
Hi, my name's Harvey Birkin. I'm a 71-year-old techie. What I don't understand is the iPads. The technology that I know and I'm aware of is that the life of our computers and laptops is usually about four years, and after that, you can give them to kids for free and buy new ones. Right now, laptops are going for about, say, $300, $400 a hit, and iPads are going for about $800, the new ones, a hit. Why didn't we consider, and maybe you did consider, buying laptops? Because with the laptops, you're able to insert additional memory in there at minimum cost. You're able to do more than what you could do in an iPad. That's the first thing. The second thing is, what, have you looked into, there are corporations out there that scan books. You can go to our neighborhood library and buy and get any ebook you want and read it on your Kindle and your laptop and your iPad. Now, all we have to do is go to these organizations and have our textbooks scanned in, and then we reduce the weight that somebody said before, 40 pounds of carrying, because all that technology would be in our computers, whether they be a laptop or an iPad. Have you considered that?
Dr. Gorman, do you wish to respond?
Yes, we've, we've actually considered all of that. The technology that we're looking at is not a scanned-in textbook. The, that industry is changing to an interactive
True.
industry. So what kids are doing now is very different with the books that they've done in the past. We, the Board contemplated the laptop one-to-one versus the iPad one-to-one. These laptops still cost significantly more than iPads for the capacity of what we want our students to be able to do with them. Laptops for taking notes and doing those things are, may have been, where internet research may have been a past vision for one-to-one learning, but the iPads, educational capacity, educational capacity. So I could bring you, the wave of iPads educationally is beyond on the rise, and the learning value associated with them are hopefully being studied and actualized, and that was the foundation. So this was an learning education forum. This, the iPad is a learning tool for kids to use, and I don't, I don't have the ability to articulate that to you in this forum right here. But if you'd like us to, to, I would love for you to come see our kids, meet with me, and I could really show you what it is. And we started doing that last year every month.
I signed up for the techie thing, so hopefully I can help you.
That's great.
But what I don't understand, getting back, why don't you scan the books? Because presently, from a debugging, a software, brand-new thing to interact with your letters, that it sees it and all those things, you can write notes on there and things like that, it's, it'll take two, three years. In the interim, you could scan your books, all your books, save a lot of money now.
I'm a, I'm a, I'm a big techie too, and correct me if I'm wrong. If we, if you have a book and you scan it, it's copyrighted. It's illegal, just like...
I'm not saying it's not illegal. I'm saying to go and...
Well, we can't break the law.
I wanna do, I wanna do legal things.
But it's illegal to take our own, our own textbooks that we purchase and scan them, just like it's, everybody does it. They, you used to take a record and copy it to a tape way back when, I'm dating myself. That's illegal too. You know, just because you can do it, you know, we have to abide by law. We can't take our existing textbooks and scan them.
Absolutely. You would have to go...
We would have to purchase them.
You would have to purchase it. You'd have to go to a publishing company. The publishing companies are doing that now, and it behooves them to do it. So have we looked into it? I'm just saying it's a course-cutting method.
Yeah, and then, yes.
So I've been in constant dialogue with high-up executives of Pearson, Apple Education, McGraw-Hill, Glencoe. If you go to the iTunes Store, these iBooks are, are now the beginning of the revolution towards interactive textbooks.
Yes.
And, and if you just, as soon as we're done, I could show it to you to help me really get you to understand the differences between that and a PDF, which you're referring to, which we've looked at ebooks and, and subscription going on sites. But the iBook is really what the major textbook companies are now moving towards, and that's, I have a research team flying in tomorrow from Boston to help us conduct possible research in this district on that technology.
Is this new software, or is it, has it been used in the field? Or is this brand-new stuff that you have all sorts of bugs with? I'm telling you.
So constantly revised. I, we've been interacting with the math, so we're starting with mathematics, algebra, geometry, Algebra II, and it will continue to evolve. So this is the beauty of it compared to an old textbook. So next year, right, old textbook, right, stopped by it 10 years later, still using the same textbook. Next year, we, if they update it, we just get an email that says, delete your old one, update, bring up your new one. So that, so even through the changes, we will instantly have the most current knowledge for our students.
I understand that. And my question is, is it in use presently?
Yes, it is. And I have the books on my iPad, so I could show you right after.
Thank you.
One quick thing, if I can. May I?
Sure.
Yeah. I have some good friends of mine. They live in West Stepford, New Jersey. They give laptops like this to every child starting at fourth grade. They do not have books on this. So the children are required to carry this in a big satchel with all their textbooks. The nice thing about the iPad, it's probably the same cost or even less than those laptops. And imagine my nine, I can't imagine my nine-year-old kid carrying this with a big satchel every day. So we don't give them that early. We do it in high school. But one thing about the iPads, it's light, it's a tablet, it's easy to carry, and it fits in a bookbag very nicely, and it has all the educational tools as well.
When I was in high school, I also carried a 16-pound chopbook with my books.
I'm gonna let Mr. Leary just make a quick comment, Mr. Leary?
Quick comment.
Okay.
We're talking about the conversion from paper to electronic memory. Associated with that are licensing procedures in order to provide the protection of proprietary information and right-to-use fees for the number of times you're multiplying it. And so it has to be carefully orchestrated. There are significant financial requirements associated with those right-to-use fees, and they need to be thoroughly looked at. I know Mr. Gorman and his team will be doing that. But it, it's not, you know, just hey, grab a book and then copy it and then run away. It's not. It, it, it has to be done in a legal manner, and it has to be done with careful thought.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me address the committee a second time.
A name and address, please?
Joel Gelphob, 106 Gaskin Avenue. It doesn't like me. Here in Monroe. I'd like to thank Lou, and I'd like to thank Amy for their closing remarks before we broke, because they brought it down to a low common denominator. Amy was just saying to me, which I'm not dumb or naive, says, we didn't talk about what electric costs. We didn't talk about what heating costs. And yes, that's right. You guys should've said that starting off because you have people out here who heard Pooch Incorporated saying that you guys take 60 cents on a dollar, and you guys have $88 million, and he don't know what you're doing with your money. So why don't you go back to him? Don't come to us. Don't give us a hard time. We are on, most of people, fixed income. You tell me you're the president, madame. How does a person who gets a $2,700 social security check, who's paying $324 a month HOA fees, live and then go babysit for the children because the mother or the husband is working two jobs and they can't afford daycare? That is something you have to ponder when you ask us for more money. I'm not a pauper. I'm not saying I'm a pauper. But another facet of what I have, I don't know what any of yous have done prior to your job here. I grew up in Brownsville, Brooklyn, where if you didn't have a fight, you had your you-know-what kicked to you daily. But I learned street smarts. I'm a college graduate, but street smarts is very important too, and don't undersell it. I started my own business in 1975, became a multimillion-dollar business. I partnered with Barnes &amp; Nobles. I partnered with Mary Kay Cosmetics, and I partnered with 1-800 Flowers. I own the wholesale flower supply business. I got these people buying from me. They all said to me, how do you write invoices? Don't you have a computer? I said, no, it scares the hell out of me, but I have good pens from the bank. And they said, we want you to have a computer. I knew nothing of it. I was scared of it. I'm good with the electric switch on the wall. That's my extent of electric. I went out and contacted computer companies, which in 1980 this was. They were talking $15,000, $20,000 for a unit for an office. No second station, no third station, one station. And they'll bankroll it for you, and you'll pay this, and you'll pay that. I studied from so many computer companies that came down to me until I exhausted everybody who was available. Number one, I got it down to $11,000. I got a superior system. I got two stations, and I got three days a week support for two months. I had to ask the guy to leave after five weeks because my four-member office staff knew how to operate that computer. I didn't. They did, and that's all that's important. I don't know here, from you group of people, did you do your research for these iPads? Did you hunt out the best source? Did you try to get the best deal? I don't think so. I don't see anybody here hungry. I am hungry. I'm 66 years old, and I'm still hungry. I fight to get the best deal for my development, for my landscaping services, for my irrigation services, pond services, and snow removal. And I fight over $50. I don't think anybody here fights, and I think you should consider it.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Bono, 38, Cruncher. It was nice, the dog and pony show we went through with facts and figures. But the bottom line is why we all came here tonight is, it's not, you have problems, but that's why you were elected to the Board, because you said you could take care of them. Now, the whole deal that we're looking for is to cut spending. Now, I have a few things which are very confusing to me. In the first place, you said you gave the teachers a 2% raise, mere pittance, and then a 2% and a 2.5%. So 6.5% over three years. There's at least 12% of the population that's out of work, and they'd be happy to work for the money they made last year, okay? But we're giving out more money, and we got $700 back, but gave them $3,000 in increases. The next thing that, when, when Trenton says, I want you to cut your budget 15%, it doesn't mean raise the taxes 15%. That's not cutting your budget. That's staying par. The other thing that I'm a little concerned with with Trenton, many years ago, when they decided to put the mafia out of business and get rid of the numbers game, they decided, we're gonna get into the numbers game, but how are we gonna do it legally so it's legit? So they said, let's come up with a lotto. Yeah, but how are we gonna do that and make it legit? Let's say it's for schools. We're gonna take this dollar and we're gonna give it to the schools. Now it's legit. We're not making any money, which we all know is a lie. Now, you look at some of the mega jackpots and the Powerball jackpots. It's $100 million here and $90 million there. Where is that money? Why aren't we seeing that from the government? Now, the thing that I want you all to tell me I'm wrong about is I am under the understanding that, first of all, we get these iPods for every kid in the building, which is wonderful, and then they still carry 40 pounds of books, which is stupid. Now, what is the iPod used for? To write typing stuff. If I have no idea, I'm totally electronic illiterate, okay? I just about get my computer on and go to email. So you wanna teach the kids in today's school how to use these, this equipment, God bless you. Why not buy dirty, have a class, part of their curriculum, bring them into the class in their computer class, and show them how to use the iPod, and don't hand it out to 2,000 kids. Now, here's the thing that I want you to tell me I'm wrong on. From what I heard, every kid gets an iPod. Beautiful. Now it costs them $50 insurance in case they lose the iPod. If that's my kid, the day he came home, he lost that iPod. I got a $50 iPod. Cost me 50 for an $800 iPod. Are we crazy? Are we telling them, you give me $50 and you could keep the iPod? This is madness. Is anybody thinking? If you tell them you lose the iPod, you pay for it, that's a different story. After we gave it to them, which we shouldn't have gave it to them in the first place, but to give them a second one for $50? This is madness. So I want you to explain this insurance policy because I was an insurance underwriter for 40 years. There's no way in the world I would agree to this policy. You give me 50, I give you an $800 product. Go.
Dr. Gorman?
Somebody go.
Dr. Gorman, sorry.
Okay, I give this a shot. Not with all of it, but definitely, definitely the fee. The fee is not an insurance policy. It's a protection plan so we can continue to repair and do whatever we need to maintain the highest quality for the iPad.
But if they lose it, they get a new one.
Just let me finish.
Go ahead.
One of the things with the iPad is it has basically a built-in tracking device in it. So if this thing is in Washington right now, I could go on my computer and know that it's in Washington. So we have had conversations with the police company, Department, to come in here and partner with them in case vandalism, loss, theft occurs. If it breaks, okay, if it breaks, if it cracks...
And that can't be, that can't be disconnected, the tracking device.
It can.
End of conversation.
No, no, you're not gonna, well, if you, if you want, if you wanna just...
Well, if it can be, then there's no other, don't tell me it's in Washington, because if I'm smart enough, I disconnect it. It could be next door.
Okay, there is...
Your, your, your three minutes is over.
I'm, I'm gone?
Yeah, please, please.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Let me, let me, let me give a quick shot. Okay, this happened to me at work. My boss, a few months ago, has an iPad. Has a... a few months ago, has an iPad. That's another dude in Monroe School. This is an example. He left his iPad on the plane. It's a Wi-Fi iPad. And he said to me, he's got personal business information on it. So, I went on my computer in the office. I locked it. Of course, I messed up. I locked the wrong code. I wrote down the wrong password. As soon as that iPad got in touch with any Wi-Fi, or somebody, if somebody tried to use it, that iPad was useless. He actually found it, brought it back to the office, and there was no way even Apple could do anything with it. The iPad is totally useless. Luckily, I remembered the code and got it back, and I didn't get fired.
Let's go back to square one. That could be disconnected.
Thank, thank you for your, thank you for your comments.
As long as it can be, there's no other conversation, because anybody can do this.
So, if somebody does that, it's rendered useless.
My three minutes are finished.
Hi. My name is Morley Malden, and I live in Greenbrier, across the road. And a couple of years ago, I suggested to this board that they consider suing the state about their contribution to our funds. And I'm glad to say that there's some progress going on looking into the legal aspects. And I helped bring in one of the attorneys that knows the most about the history of the state, even though it's a very rugged, terrible history. So, you can't blame it on the present governor. This is a long history. In any event, I want to bring up another angle that is very important that hasn't been mentioned yet. We, tonight, there were some very, it was a very interesting meeting, I found, because even though a lot of people are complaining about their taxes, it's clear that they don't understand the whole basis of what's happened to them in Monroe. And I don't want to go into that, except that's a subject that ought to be explained to people, because it's very serious, and it's things that we have to do something about. But, the purpose that I have is to bring up the subject of publicity, because we have a terrible story, which is a great news story. And I could just see a huge poster that shows what Monroe gets from the state of New Jersey, and what Old Bridge, and what some of these other communities around get. And there isn't anybody that could defend that before anybody that's got any sense. So, what we need to do is find a way to emphasize that, to get Marcia Kramer from Channel Two News out here to do a story on television, because that's how most people in this country get their news, surprisingly. But, that's, they don't read. They watch television, sound bites. Anyway, there's a lot that we can do. I've already made contacts with one of the groups, and we're gonna try merging it. And I've come up with a title, because there's something about this title to me that ought to be considered. Citizens for Fair Funding of New Jersey Schools. Now, there are a lot of things about that. First of all, the word citizens. Citizens vote. And believe me, seniors vote. Second thing, there's an alliteration, which I love. For fair funding. Okay? Now, and New Jersey schools. Now, that doesn't mean it's just Monroe. In other words, this could be expanded. So, all this is flexible. So, what we need to do is start getting, now, we must have had three hundred or more people here tonight. Okay, every one of them would be happy to join this organization, because what they do is they get a card that says you are a lifetime member, and you get this, this one-page sheet also that tells you, you know, what the situation is between these different school fundings. Okay, one more minute. And anyway, the hundred, a hundred people, each one goes out, gets ten more members, that's a thousand. Each one of those gets ten more members, that's ten thousand. And then you got beginnings of some real numbers. And I'm telling you, there isn't a governor in the world that can stand the kind of publicity we can get, and I know it can be done, because we've done this elsewhere. So, let's do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Malden, there's a, there is a group...
No, no. We're gonna finish our public forum.
Can I respond to that, Madam President?
Oh, I'm sure.
Thank you. Mr. Malden, there is a group that we have been talking to called Save Our Schools, and that's exactly what their purpose and mission is. So, it may behoove us to encourage our citizens to be a part of that group as well.
Good evening. It's Doug Poy for Tamarack Road. I've asked that something be distributed to each of you, and I'm gonna reference that in just a minute, but I do have a question. The referendum money that we have when we built the high school, I know there were two, essentially, two big referendums to get the total amount that we needed. Are we still paying bills out of that money?
I'll let Mr. Gorsky handle that.
The answer to that is yes. Recently, for example, the Board of Education authorized a change order to renovate one of the classrooms in, in this building into an autistic room. And the purpose of that was to bring back in district autistic pupils instead of paying higher out-of-district cost. That's estimated to save a hundred thousand dollars a year once it gets up to speed.
Okay. And how long do we have access to those funds for expenditures?
Five years after the sale of the bonds. So, it was the recommendation of the Finance Committee. There was approximately seven million dollars that was surplus between the two bond referenda, three million dollars of which were still waiting from the state grant that I mentioned before. So, two million dollars was used to offset the debt service levy in twelve thirteen, and it will be recommended to use at least that much for next year to offset the levy, and then wrap it up the final, the later year.
The point of my questioning is the fact that we seem to have rushed into the iPad initiative, and we did take a loss. It's clear to me that we took a loss in terms of what we paid for it, and then what we got back for it. And now, we have indebted the township to the tune of about five hundred thousand dollars for the next two years after this one, because this year, we've covered it from those other funds that you explained. Why could we not have waited before we rushed into it and done a little bit more research, or maybe done a pilot program, things of that nature? And I don't really expect you to answer that question, but if we had time to spend those funds, I don't know why we had to spend them so quickly, and then have this, what I consider was a very bad publicity for the Board of Education. And I'm not yet convinced that all of our teaching staff is on board, because you're still talking about training. I just think it could have been implemented quite differently, along a different timeline, and maybe we wouldn't have lost any money. Now, I'll turn to this other point. And I brought this tonight to the, to the board meeting, because I've had a lot of people contact me either in person when they see me, because they know I'm very, very interested in education, or they have sent me emails. And they, and one of the earlier speakers tonight was lamenting the fact that Monroe did not make the top one hundred high schools. Do I need to stop?
Yeah, we are, because some, Mike took some of his time.
Oh, okay. So, I did some research from the New Jersey Monthly, the September issue, and I wanted to point this out, and I'm sorry that so much of the audience has left, because they have left with the bad news. And I really think there is some very good news. Our students have done really quite well, and so has our staff, because our students don't function without the staff there to teach them. And so, I will point it out to this board and to anyone who may hear this, that when you look at the top one hundred that New Jersey Monthly identified, if you look at the variable of combined SAT scores, Monroe scored higher than twenty of the high schools in the top one hundred. That is significant, in my opinion. If you look at the percent of students that scored three or higher on the AP exams, Monroe scored higher than thirty-six of the top one hundred high schools. If you look at the number of students scoring advanced proficiency in the state's language arts assessment, Monroe scored higher than twenty-one of the top one hundred high schools. If you look at the percent scoring advanced proficiency in mathematics, Monroe scored higher than nineteen of the top one hundred. And if you look at the percent of ninth-grade students who graduated within four years, Monroe scored higher than forty-seven of the top one hundred high schools. So, the public might wonder, "Well, why is it that Monroe didn't make the top one hundred?" And it's because there were other variables that the New Jersey Monthly uses, and one of those is class size. And on class size, Monroe scores abysmally low, because we have such a very high class size. We have a lot of students, on the average, in our classes, and that was a very big factor with them. So, I wanted to point that out, and I'm not gonna go into these other statistics. You have it there. But, I also compared Monroe to the socioeconomic high schools in the district. I wanted to see how they fared there, and I think they fared quite well. And you have those statistics before you. I also wanted to see how we fared in terms of Middlesex County. There are twenty-two high schools in Middlesex County, and we fared very well in terms of Middlesex County. So, I'm not saying that there's, there's not room for improvement. I definitely believe we can make a better school. We can build a better school. I don't believe it has to cost more money. And what I heard the public saying tonight is, the perception among the public is that you want us to have a Cadillac, and we can only afford a Chevrolet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Poy, Mr. Poy, are, are you interested in returning to the workforce?
No, I just have an interest in education, and I don't mind really spending some time doing some statistical research, because I believe it's the data that we have to look at. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
President Obama's there, I guess. Robert Roach, eighteen Yorfield Boulevard, Monroe. Two questions I have. One is, about a year ago, I requested that the board, after we had some discussion with the board, that they have the public forum before the closed session, and I was told that you have to have a closed forum after, after the closed session. And, but there was no restrictions on having three public forums. Now, I noticed in looking a couple of months ago at Jamesburg's agenda item, they had their public forum before their closed session with no closed session after that. So, I think if it's at all legally permissible, I think you should have the closed session, an open session before the closed session, so that the people didn't have to wait around for an hour or so. I think that's fairness, fairness to the public. Second question is that I know that, my recollection is that there was nine million dollars left over from the construction cost on the bonding, seven million of which was going to be used for taxpayer relief. And as Mr. Gorsky said, I know the, the taxpayer portion of the debt was reduced by two million this year. But, Dr. Gorman had indicated that, and the other two million has been said many, 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 many times, that the iPads cost two million dollars, and we sold them for four million, and we lost one, one point six. Now, Dr. Gorman is saying that the iPads cost one point one million. So, if that is factually correct, what happened to the other nine million, nine hundred thousand dollars of the budget money, the bonding money that was used, allegedly used for the iPads?
I believe that we spent two millions of dollars of that bond referendum money for technology, one point one million dollars for the iPads. The rest of it went for different technology pieces of the, in the high school. Do you have a...
Yeah, there was, there was a resolution that the board passed. It was two point four, two point three million dollars in total. The iPads were about one point three million, as Dr. Gorman mentioned earlier. And the difference was made up of some laptop computers for specific AutoCAD programs that couldn't be run on the Apple devices. And there was also servers and some other technology that was implemented throughout the school.
Well, was that...
Projection monitors and things like that.
Well, you indicated that during the meeting last year, as I recall, that you had a legal opinion that the iPads could be purchased under technology. Did the legal opinion include these other items that you purchased?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Mr. Hamoki. It's nice to see you.
Joe Hamoki, sixty-one Hafman Road. A year ago, I was here, and I spoke about Monroe trying to get into the top one hundred. And I think you said, Doctor, that your goal is to be under one hundred, and unfortunately, we didn't make it. I'm very disappointed in that. Even though we had all those good news, I'm surprised that we didn't make it. I don't understand just one thing can disqualify us. But, I think tonight was like the perfect storm. You had a large, concerned audience. You had issues of iPads, taxes, state aid, petition. And I'd just like to mention that Mark Klein, who's been preaching for the last three years, the same thing over and over again, and every board member here could repeat what Mark has said over and over again. And I think finally, Mark is coming to fruition, because we have a petition, maybe something will get going. My personal opinion is that our two Assembly people and the senator have not done enough for our district. They have not done enough. I don't know if you know or not, but how much per pupil is Hamilton Township getting? Does anybody know? Maybe...
Four thousand.
Sorry?
Four thousand.
Four thousand per?
Yep.
Okay. And that's...
They're FG, just like us.
Okay. But, anyway, I don't think they have done enough. And I think maybe with the petition that's presented to them and to others, maybe something will get going. So, I really think that Mark deserves a lot of credit, even though he bored a lot of people, because they did the same thing over and over and over again. Even I could make the speech, Mark.
We're fishing tomorrow.
We're going tomorrow. Just a couple of observations. The plaque, it took you three years to make a decision on a plaque. That's unbelievable. And my experience has been over the last twelve, fourteen, fifteen years, it was never a committee issue. It was always automatic. The architect automatically put the thing up. We never even talked about it. It was just up. That's the way it used to go, and I think that's the way it should go. So, I think you made the right decision on that. The other thing is, the state aid is established, and I think you have to live within those means. It's not gonna change. It's not gonna change. Let me tell you, aside from the two Assembly people and the senator, the others really don't care about Monroe Township. They don't care about the problems you have over here. They could care less. They only care about their own district. They push for their own districts. One more remark about iPads. The only thing that I would have done differently is, not to go wholesale, it doesn't make any sense. In education, what we do is, since I was an educator, you always run a pilot group, a small group, control group, and then you assess, evaluate how it worked out. Then you go big time. That would save you a lot of, lot of headaches, lot of money, and a lot of aggravation that you had here tonight. So, that's just a recommendation. In future, if you do anything brand-new, so dramatic, try a control group first. And if it works, go big time. If it doesn't work, abandon it. You don't lose too much. That's about it. And it's nice to be on the other side instead of being on that side. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Hamoki. After close, after public forum.
Hi, I'm back again. Harvey Birkin, one twelve Gaskinian Avenue. Again, techie question. I just overheard that using AutoCAD, did you consider using SolidWorks? SolidWorks is the, one of the primary 3D softwares that's being used in college and in the industries. AutoCAD is an archaic thing that I used way back, like, forty years ago. But, it's been trying to catch up on the technology standpoint. From a 3D, which the children need now, using surfacing and all sorts of things, electrical, mechanical, piping, is the way to go, or consider. And there can be used on laptops, not iPads. Just something to throw out here.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Wait, wait. I didn't close the public forum yet. Seeing no one, we'll close the public forum. And Mr. Leary, I will let you speak.
Thank you. Approximately the year two thousand and seven, we had the Libertarian Party come and wage a lawsuit... Approximately the year 2007, we had the Libertarian Party come and wage a lawsuit against us. And we had the misfortune of going before Judge Alexander Wog in New Brunswick. And he is the jabony who came up with the rule that we have to live by. It's a court order. So we have nothing to do with it. Everybody else can be sensible. We were sensible before, but the Libertarian Party came in, and they gave us the shaft. Secondly, Doug is right on, and, but the thing is, take a look at the Inside Jersey magazine that was, what, 10 days ago or so, Dr. Hamilton?
Yes, sir.
And it went and looked at the schools on a county-by-county basis. And remember, Middlesex County is the second biggest county in the state. Only Bergen is bigger. We have surpassed Essex. And we come in, and there are only eight comprehensive schools that they look at. The other two are specialized schools that are magnet schools. They are for engineering and for health science. But of the eight schools, the comprehensive schools, we are right in that cluster, and we have done remarkable. And Doug is absolutely right, and I want to compliment him on that. But the, and again, I will go back to my prior statements. This board has worked very hard, and when you look at things on a per-student basis and fold in the Consumer Price Index increases, we have done a remarkable job, particularly in light of things that Amy was talking about, all these mandates that are coming crashing in on our head, on a per-student basis with Consumer Price Index factored in. Over the last 10 years, 4% increase. And when you factor in all the mandates, we've done a superb job. End of statements.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Okay, seeing that we have closed public forum, our next scheduled Public Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, October 17, 2012, 7 o'clock PM at the high school. A motion to adjourn.
I move.
Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Tesler, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, meeting is adjourned.